Okay, we'll bring this meeting to order. Before we get started, Commissioner Jim Moran is on assignment. And I know Patrick, Commissioner.
He'll be here sometime soon.
Patrick is coming soon, he'll be here. So we're gonna go ahead and get started.
All right, thank you Commissioner Dumanil. All right, so we are here this afternoon for the annual Maryland Department of Transportation Tour Meeting for the FY 25 to FY 30 Consolidated Transportation Plan. And it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Paul Weidfeld, the Secretary of MDOT. He will be leading the briefing today with his modal administrators here. So we've been through this a couple of times, so I'll turn the floor over to Secretary Weidfeld to lead this brief.
I think it's safe to say we're on a first-name basis now, right?
We are, yes we are. Good to see you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon again, Paul Weidfeld, Secretary of Transportation for the record. Thank you for inviting us to provide an overview of the capital program for fiscal years 25 through 26. I know it's the CTP, but it's our capital budget. I also wanted to just take a moment to thank you for meeting with us at Mako. It's always a good opportunity to hear some of your issues directly and see what things we can knock down together. At Mako, you did request the extension of egress and ingress lanes along US 50 and 301 from the arterial routes. The State Highway is reviewing the locations along both corridors, determine if those extensions would be feasible. So we are following up on that request at that meeting. I will keep my opening comments brief, focusing on an update on the department's finances, since it drives the investment levels for both projects and services here in Queen Anne's County. I will then turn the briefing over to representatives of the different modes, again, to give them more details of specific projects for the county. And of course, at the end of the presentation, we'll be glad to take any questions or comments that you might have. Regarding MDOT's finances, as you may recall, last year's capital program required a $3.3 billion reduction between operating and capital budgets. Thanks to the governor's one-time funding through the state's rainy day fund and the additional estimated $1.8 billion in revenues passed by the General Assembly last year, MDOT was able to reduce the level of reductions needed to balance the budget. For example, with these funds, we were able to maintain and convince the local governments to restore the highway user funds, which is very important to the county, and also to locally operated transit grants. Turning now to this year's draft CTP for fiscal years again 25 through 30, we continue to face some significant headwinds, budget challenges based on the slow economy currently, rising cost of labor materials, which I'm sure you're also experiencing here in the county, and revenues coming in lower than projections. For example, the motor fuel revenue trust fund, which is our funding source, is our largest funding element of the trust fund, came in roughly $350 million lower than projections. At the same time, operating costs have increased by $300 million. Again, this is over the whole program period, not one year, but over the whole program period. As a result of these financial pressures, obviously, we have to make strategic investments with the limited resources that we have and focusing on the safety of people who use the system and maintaining the system and its operations. So getting into the details of the draft CTP, it is balanced, under state law we're required to do that, at $18.9 billion. So yes, we have less dollars, but we are actually spending quite a bit of dollars doing a lot of work across the state. However, because of those constraints, we had to make some tough decisions and reductions will live within our means. This reduction, this resulted in a reduction of roughly $1.3 billion compared to the program last year. Again, even with these reductions, MDOT is committed to. Strategically using available resources to advance the state's priorities. The number one priority, of course, is safety, the safety of everyone using the transportation system, including those who walk on it, those who bike on it, and clearly those who work on the system. For example, this summer, I did sign an updated department-wide complete streets policy. The updated policy will support Maryland's Vision Zero goal for rapidly reducing traffic fatalities and serious injuries on the system by 2030. In addition to our focus on safety, the department will continue to make strategic investments that support Maryland's families and economy of the state. Some examples include advancing electric vehicle charging stations, new federally-funded resiliency and carbon reduction projects across the state. Funding the Howard Street Tunnel up in Baltimore, which is, which will allow double stacking of cargo through the Port of Baltimore, which is a tremendous effort, tremendous opportunity for the state of Maryland to compete globally in that market. The funding of the AB connector at Baltimore-Washington International Third Grader Marshall Airport, which if you use the airport, this will help particularly with the baggage system. If you ever had issues with getting your baggage in and out of the system, this will help that and obviously help grow the airport. Funding the Frederick Douglass Tunnel project, that's a very large project of Amtrak. It's the main line of the northeast corridor, which obviously benefits us for the MARC system between, actually, potential all the way from Delaware through Virginia. And then advancing the infrastructure investments for the FBI headquarters, a great opportunity for the state of Maryland with the headquarters being located in Greymount. So there's some improvements there that we will continue. Clearly, we have to continue to invest in preserving the system. We, you know, by putting off any investments on the preserving the system, we will pay later. So we do have to work on that, how we will continue that, and that will be obviously a very large discussion in the upcoming session with the General Assembly. So that concludes my opening remarks. I will now turn it over to Administrator Pines from State Highway to begin the local updates from the modes.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, and good afternoon, everyone. Will Pines, State Highway Administrator. And I also want to take a moment to introduce SHA's District Engineer for District Two, who you all know well, Kenny Fender. He does a really great job helping your teams with constituent support and local needs, and so I just wanted to thank him publicly. It's been a pleasure meeting with you recently at Mako and over this last summer, and we look forward to continuing our conversations on how we can best support the county's needs. At SHA, we understand the fiscal challenges Maryland is facing. However, I want to assure you of two things. First, SHA will continue to do big things, moving forward with multimodal projects that are safety, accessibility, mobility, and equity. Second, safety will always be our highest priority. This means building and maintaining a system that supports pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and all users, including our highway workers. SHA has been a proud partner with MDOT on the new complete streets policy, and we're putting it into action with our Complete Streets Leadership Academy. The information and experience that we will gain as we work through these projects will benefit us across the state as we make future roadway safety improvements and make our roads more accessible for everyone. One of my first asks when I came on board last year was that our team enhance our crosswalks statewide. And in fiscal year 2024, we upgraded 1,009 crosswalks at 462 intersections across the state. And in Queen Anne's County, we upgraded 13 crosswalks. Last year, I talked about my goal to improve the modernization and efficiency of SHA. Over the past year, we began refreshing our access permitting process to streamline and improve our review timelines to support economic development in Maryland. And this includes closely tracking permits from the Traffic Impact Study to the Plan Review, all the way out to getting that. Updated our procedures and timelines and made those more transparent in a public-facing way. And with this, SHA, we've improved our, both our permit reviews and the issuance timelines while seeing an increase in the number of permits that we actually receive. We'll continue to explore other ways where we can make the agency more efficient to best support local and developer partners. Now I'd like to highlight a few local projects that SHA has been moving on and thank the county for its support and partnership while moving through this. In April, we hosted a second open house as part of the Planning and Environmental Linkages Study to Access Transportation Needs Along the Main Street Section of Maryland 18. The study will be completed at the end of the year. And in May and June, we resurfaced sections of Maryland 18 and Maryland 213 near Kent Island and Centerville. And in July, we closed the Maryland 405 crossover at Maryland 301 to conduct an in-depth evaluation of the location, given the significant number of crashes that have occurred there. We added channelization in the westbound median and improved signage, then reopened the crossover last month. We're working on a beacon system to alert US 301 drivers to the cross-traffic and expect to install this system in 2025. We're also making progress on a $12.3 million project to replace the 301 bridge over the Chester River. Talked about that a little minute ago. We expect to set main beams this fall and are working toward the completion next summer. I want to thank everyone here for their patience during this critical project. We feel that the contraflow that's in place has been working well to maintain one lane in each direction in the southbound span. And as you know, we completed a full summer of the westbound US 50 management program on Kent Island, working with the county. SHA provided staff, equipment, signage, and website support for the program. Again, while we have to live within our budget, we're still going to be doing big things to advance important projects and programs throughout the county. With that, I want to thank you for your time, and I'll now turn it over to my colleague, Bruce Gartner at the Maryland Transportation Authority.
Thank you, Will. Again, Bruce Gartner, Executive Director of the MDTA. Wanted to start off by talking about the Chesapeake Bay Crossing Study. That's a $26 million project for a Tier 2 NEPA evaluation that's underway. We continue to focus on the selected corridor alternative, or corridor seven, which is the two-mile-wide path extending 22 miles from the Seven River Bridge to the US 50-301 split. We've made tremendous progress over the last year, and we expect to hold in-person and virtual public open houses in early December. That will show alternatives retained for detailed study for the first time. In addition to that, our study team continues to tour community events to engage with the public about this study. I wanted to assure you that even though we had originally thought we'd be able to get out for these public meetings before these tour meetings, the move to December will not delay the project. We anticipate completing that study in the winter of 2026. Shifting now to the ongoing work on the Bay Bridge, we do have the $140 million eastbound deck replacement project, or Phase One, going on. To minimize the traffic impacts, we're utilizing off-peak lane closures overnight with two-way traffic on the westbound span. For each deck panel, crews are removing one or two sections of the bridge deck and replacing it with new pre-cast sections. Commissioner Moran was actually able to go view that operation a few weeks ago, so I think he and some of the other BRAG members got a good feel for just how efficiently those crews can work overnight. Getting started was difficult in the early time periods when we had winds in March, and some of those got delayed. But we're up to 43 panels out of the 156 panels to be installed with this first package. We anticipate wrapping that up in the spring of 2025, and the second package is expected to wrap up in the fall of 2026. Finally, to conclude with another bridge, and that is the Key Bridge, we do deeply appreciate all the support throughout the state in the aftermath of the Key Bridge collapse. We continue our efforts there to make sure that Maryland taxpayers are protected from the damages caused by that vessel, working with both the federal government and the Attorney General's Office to recoup those dollars and minimizing the impact on the agency. We evaluate our financial situation twice a year, our next one being at the end of this calendar year. But we are looking forward to, at some point, that federal emergency relief funding to get all of the bridge funding. And that's all I have for you this afternoon. So I will turn it over to Travis at the Maryland Transit Administration.
Thank you, Bruce, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Travis Johnston, the Director of Local Transit Support at the Maryland Transit Administration. A safe, reliable, and rider-focused public transit system remains key to growing and strengthening our region. It means decreased carbon emissions, a reduction in traffic congestion, and safer streets for the entire region. A robust public transit system also means economic and social mobility. In fiscal year 2024, MTA's $1.3 billion in spending had an economic impact of $2.9 billion for our state. The work that we do supported more than 24,000 jobs across the state. In addition to MTA's investment, the locally operated transit systems are critical partners in providing transit throughout the state. Overall, we invest in transit in Queen Anne's County by providing more than $630,000 in operating and capital grants to support local transit operations. In FY 25, these grants provide funding for two new minivans and a five-year transportation development plan. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I will now turn it over to Leslie from MVA.
Thank you, Travis. Again, I'm Leslie Doos, Deputy Administrator over at MVA. Customer satisfaction has always been the cornerstone at the MVA, and our employees express this commitment by delivering premier customer service. If you've interacted with the MVA in the past year, you may have noticed that we've elevated the customers' experience at every transaction. At the last month, as of the last month, the agency's overall customer satisfaction rate was 99.5%. By prioritizing efficiency and accessibility in fiscal '24, the MVA's average wait time was just five minutes, and that's despite completing 6.7% more transactions than in the previous year. We continue to encourage our customers to sign up for my MVA account and to take advantage of the many transactions and services available online. The MVA is also continuing to expand its one-stop-shop concept statewide by conveniently co-locating state and federal services within our branch offices. At the Eastern Branch, this includes a new EZ Pass customer service center that has assisted more than 80 residents since opening in early September. To expand the MVA's reach into local communities, the MVA bus is often in Chestertown to provide services and outreach to customers, conducting over 540 transactions in fiscal '24. Our MVA outreach team has also proffered to work with test students at Kent Island High School and Queen Anne's High School. The MVA and its partners remain committed to developing solutions to save lives on our roadways and to reach a goal of zero fatalities, and that is the only acceptable number. Last year, 11 people lost their lives in Queen Anne's County, and so far this year, there have been three fatalities. For us, even one death is too many. These deaths are not just numbers, they are people who are friends and loved ones. Last month, Governor Moore announced more than 42,000 in highway safety grants to the Queen Anne Sheriff's Department. The grants will support the work of officers dedicated to eliminating impaired and distracted driving crashes and roadway deaths. We encourage the local jurisdictions to develop their own highway safety plan that will complement the statewide plan while addressing specific concerns of their jurisdictions. And I want to thank the county officials for taking the steps to develop a local plan. In closing, many of the MVA's accomplishments could not have been possible without the hard work and dedication of committed MVA employees. As a team, the MVA continues to set an example and raise the benchmark on what it means to do business with a motor vehicle agency. Thanks for your attention, and I will turn it over to Ashish at MAA.
Commissioner, it's great to be with you again this afternoon. A pleasure to brief you on our aviation system here today. In the past, I've talked about our safety programs and a lot of the safety initiatives we've worked on. Today, I want to share with you in our aviation system our economic impact, the impact of what our airports generate to our community and certainly to the businesses that service our airports and our customers. Wanted to give you an idea of where we are, both at BWI Marshall Airport as well as our regional airports. First, at BWI Marshall, we generate over $11.3 billion annually in economic impact. This is just, not just on the airport, but also indirect impacts off of the airport. And that also generates over 107,000 jobs. This is jobs that support all of us in our communities. Out of our 33 public use airports, including our Bay Bridge Airport here locally, we are generating over $1.4 billion in economic activity. And this is, again, indirect and direct impact, not just for businesses on the airport, but other businesses that benefit because of the use of the airport by our customers. This also generates over 10,000 jobs to our community, again, in support of our businesses on the airport. I want to close in a comment to say, in support of this economic activity, we're providing $3.5 million in funding this year. This goes to our safety program. This goes to the runways, taxiways, apron improvements that we have statewide. So thank you for the opportunity to give you a short brief on our aviation program today. Now it's my pleasure to turn it back over to Secretary Weidfeld.
Thank you, Ashish. In closing, I'd like to make, I just make a few comments about the other economic engine of the state of Maryland, which is the Port of Baltimore. The port is rebounding strongly and is working on a new master plan that will grow the business and generate additional jobs. Of course, all of our numbers would have been higher but for obviously the bridge collapse and the impacts that had on the Port of Baltimore. I can tell you the number of ships and trucks coming and going from the port are just about back to normal levels. However, the overall cargo volumes are down. They will catch up over time, but just given the nature of that industry, of how long it takes to get back into the stream. Also, the cruise ships were able to restart operations in June, and that is going very well. While we welcome these positive elements, we are, however, still assessing the damages and long-term impacts caused by the port shutdown and the loss of the Key Bridge. The port has joined the state's legal actions that seek to hold the dolly's owner and the management accountable for the state's damages. So that is in the legal arena right now. In closing, I did just want to reinforce, again, our commitment to preserving the system, need to preserve particular highways and bridges across the state. Even with these financial pressures we're under, we're going to continue to focus on that, but we cannot let that slip over time because we will pay much larger in the long run if we don't do that. So it is a large focus of ours, will be a large focus of ours during the General Assembly as we make the case for what we need to do to deal with some of the financial issues. So that concludes our comments. Be glad to take any questions or comments that you might have.
Does the delegation, delegation have any questions?
Yeah, I certainly have a number. You guys are going to go first?
Let's go first.
Please.
Go ahead.
You might hit some of the points.
Is that all right if I sit here? Yeah. Well, first of all, thank you, Commissioners, for having us. Our apologies for being a little bit late, although we were in the same place. We had a quick meeting with the elected officials up in Cecil County as we finished off. So we were able to hear the presentation, a lot of it similar, but also a lot of very specific parts here at the Queen Anne's. And if I could just address a couple of things, I know that we've talked with a lot about the Commissioners, but first was the, and if I missed it, I apologize, but I don't know if you had spoken about where we were in the process of the Tier 2 NEPA study regarding the Bay Bridge crossing.
Yes, so, yeah. Public, thank you, sir. Public meetings in December. So we had originally hoped that they would be before these tour meetings. They will be early December, so probably in that first week or so, we'll be coming out with those dates about a month beforehand. And that does not slow down the final issuance of that, which will be in the winter of '26.
So we're still, so we're expecting this to be completed winter of '26?
Yes.
And just for everybody, after that's completed, then what is the next step in the broader process of the design construction? Because this NEPA 2 will discuss financing, correct?
It'll discuss the alternatives that we'll be carrying forward. So we'll come out with a recommendation of which alternative we carry forward, and then we need to identify some certain level of planning or design funding for what we'd move forward on that alternative right after that.
Steve, if I could just, just.
It's a backup, yeah.
For the people who are watching, because they hear studies and they go, why are we still studying the same thing? And the public doesn't understand. We're not doing the same study again and again.
No, no.
There are different things being studied. But on a sort of more elementary level, can you explain to the people watching, like, what these studies are, why we're doing them, and how this is necessary for the broader project?
Certainly. So the first part of this process was looking at all the different corridors that could possibly be used for additional structures across the bay. So in this, in this study, we're focused on that Route 50 corridor, right? So what would happen within close proximity? And as I said before, it's that length from the Seven River Bridge to the 50-301 split. So that's what we're focused on now. So that's whether it would be multiple bridges that would go there, or a bridge tunnel, a tunnel, what number of lanes, you know, the facility would have, transit, bike peda access, those types of things. So what we will come out in the public hearings would be, you know, looking at all those alternatives. Here are several that we think merit moving forward for additional consideration. So we'll be narrowing those types of options down in this next phase. And we'll be, so the materials that will come out before our meetings in December will give you an idea of what is going to move forward, and we can have input with the community on those processes. We're going to have a meeting here in Queen Anne's County, we're going to have a meeting in Anaronda County, and we'll have a virtual meeting that will be online for anybody to look at from, you know, throughout the area.
Sorry for interrupting. No, I appreciate it, Commissioner. Second question, again, you spoke a little bit about the deck replacement on the eastbound span, and it is quite a project to actually see them lift these panels out of place. I've been asked a number of times that these panels appear to be a little bit shorter than some of the panels that are already existing, and thus the joints seem to be closer together and are also in a position that you're, you know, going through them. Is this the finished condition? Is?
It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing process. So what you, what you experienced in the first stages of this is when we had those metal grates creating that, bridging the gap until we got to the permanent concrete finish. That was, you know, we had shift approaches there, so putting in temporary concrete between those joints for, you know, a section a few feet wide. We are in the process, we've already done a couple, process of now going through and putting the permanent concrete in for the first decks that we started. So that, so as we move forward that with over the next several weeks, then that ride is getting smoother for a longer period of time.
That's good to know. I'm sure a lot of people will be happy to hear that.
Sure.
Back to the replacement, one of the things that you and I had spoke about before, I guess in the last, I think, two years, the notification of people that are concerned about the Bay Bridge and the traffic patterns and everything, we had gone away from the real-time text alerts, and we've focused more on emails and the ability to call, is it 877?
Bay span, yeah.
Just with these types of projects and as they're ongoing, if you guys could take a look at, could we go back to the text alert system? I think more people, especially as they're driving, and not to say that people should be, you know, reading and sending texts as they're driving, they also certainly shouldn't be looking at email as well. And I think it's more difficult for people to get emails, especially when they're enroute. And because we are seeing, you know, delays, and we understand, you know, what just happened the other night, you know, if there are things that are going on that are an emergency that need to be fixed, I think people understand that, but I think we need to find a, you know, maybe go back to a better way of making sure that we can get real-time alerts out to people.
Yeah, so, yeah, we did have that emergency situation, and we're always looking at opportunities to improve the communication. You know, that was a very unique situation. I understand from, you know, wasn't here when the decision was made, but the text alerts were, at that point, a bit cost prohibitive to do, but we'll certainly take a look at that again.
And I think there's, I think MTA has them still, or, you know, I know, I know other places, Mima certainly does, state employees have them within the state complex.
Yep, we can technically look at that.
So if we could take a look.
We'll follow up.
I know we want to talk about the red X's on the gantry at some point in time, you know, certainly in our legislative meeting, but if I can ask these guys, I just want to make sure that as you, as you go into lane closure situations, and whether or not that is for construction or whether we're even doing it as we're doing the contraflow, we, there's a series of gantries, and as they're moving forward, this, we go from the yellow X's to the red X's. And people are getting very concerned about vehicles that are going through red X's and then merging at the last minute, to the point where people are saying, how come, you know, we're not, you know, should somebody be issuing violations for this? Is somebody able to enforcement, all the way down to, you know, the Commissioners are asking, you know, potential other solutions that could involve, you know, the equivalent of red light cameras or something like that. But I want to make sure, because I know we're going to talk about it later, but to get your insight first, and that way will help us a little bit as we decide on.
Certainly. As you all know, that this has been a hot topic as well for your BRAG representatives that meet with us on a quarterly basis. We just met with them about a week ago. We have, with your help, I want to really thank Queen Anne's County and the Sheriff's Office for helping with some of the enforcement initiatives that our police have undertaken with MSP and Queen Anne's. So that enforcement between, when I was looking at the data with our police force between January and just the recent month, is gone up a tremendous amount. I shared that with Commissioner Moran, so he has that information. And we will continue to do what we can with that in-person enforcement. There is a safety issue about some of the, you know, positioning of our police officers in those medians and when it's, you know, very active. So just, you know, the way traffic is traveling through there, we, you know, need to be worried about their safety as well. I understand it's a very, you know, frustrating situation to have that passing, so we'll continue to. in those medians and when it's, you know, very active. So just, you know, the way traffic is traveling through there, we, you know, need to be worried about their safety as well. I understand it's a very, you know, frustrating situation to have that passing, so we'll continue to work with you on whatever solutions we think is good for the region, so.
Much appreciated. Thank you, Executive Director, and thank you all very much. Thank you, Secretary. I'll retire, back to my seat.
So one of the questions that I get asked frequently from my constituents is why there is so much of a backup westbound frequently? I mean, like during the week, it's not just a weekend thing, I mean, every day from 2:30 on pretty much, it's always an eastbound backup, but now we're starting to see westbound backups on a frequent basis. So I get asked that question pretty frequently by my constituents, because it's, you know, trying to figure out timing, whether they want to, if they have an appointment across the bridge or whatever, they're really not sure anymore of the timing, so.
So we do try to update our kind of advisories of when that typically happens, and our Chief Engineer, Jim Harkness, did share some summer travel comparisons at the BRAG meeting last week, so I'll be sure to get that to the delegation so that you can kind of see the trends and where things are happening and maybe get a little, you know, kind of key takeaways on that, too, because that was, you know, it's a lot of data in there. I mean, I think that, you know, that we're facing situations where, when weather impacts us, that obviously will shift time, so we can't, you know, accurately predict everything. We are doing some investigation in different queue detection techniques to be able to, you know, kind of anticipate those, those backups, so we can get that word out. So with technology improving, being able to project when those congestion points might be coming up and be able to get that out, that project is still kind of working through whether that is going to provide us a solution or not, but we are looking at those technology alternatives to kind of help everybody with that situation, because obviously, we can't increase the number of lanes, you know, overnight.
Right. So is some of this, is this an increased traffic because the bridge collapsed, people rerouting?
So, I mean, Will, can you back me up on this?
Trying to figure out what kind of reasoning is.
Right, yeah, and we're not, we're not seeing that kind of, you know, significant increase for that regional impact for the Key Bridge. We know that has come up a number of times, but any, even, you know, looking at the times, I think that, that data analysis that we share with BRAG with will be, help you as well to see what, you know, those increases are. It's been relatively flat, but, yeah.
All right, thank you.
A lot of follow-up for you.
And I just wanted one follow-up. I asked this question in Cecil about, found out that at this point, owners of EVs have not been charged their registration fee because they're still negotiating the payment plan. So my follow-up question is, do you have an idea, when do you think that will take place?
Yes, again, we're shooting for late this winter. Under the, actually, under the bill, we have until the end of June in '25, and we're trying to get that sooner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, thanks for having us. Good seeing you guys again. Hey, I have a couple of quick questions on the Bay Bridge, on the red, the red X. I think you addressed for the red X on this side of the bridge, I think the biggest issue we see is people commuting back and forth is on the other side of the bridge. That seems to be, we talk about safety, but that seems to be where I see the most road rage directed at me, and people like me riding and trying to stay in that lane and having people coming up. And I didn't know what's happening over there, because I see very little enforcement on that side, and I understand it's dangerous.
Yeah, I was actually trying to reference both, but didn't do it so specifically, so yes, with that median over there, it is a little more challenging for the in-person enforcement, you know, coming on the Anaronda side, so, but again, you know, overall, we've tried to increase the enforcement of the red X.
It's not, we know that's not working. I go through there two or three times a week, and I'm stuck in there, and I keep, I'll be sitting getting calls from somebody, why don't you just jump out and come up, and I'll let you in. But when I say that, I sit down and say, maybe it's not the best way to approach it, because we do have a big, big cluster at the end of the bridge where you're getting onto it, and you have a whole lot of frustrated people. And if the X wasn't there, if we're just going to drive, maybe courtesy would be a better path up at that point of the bridge.
So, yeah, obviously, we do still have work to do, and we have been evaluating different options, we just don't have that solution yet, but.
Are there any suggestions coming forward that work?
There's, there's a couple that we've talked about internally, unfortunately, with the way the standard traffic displays are approved by the federal government work, they wouldn't give it, grant us an experimental way to do some merging there, but that's certainly something we, you know, need to push forward on more.
Okay, the other thing that's come to play is, the county's really worked hard at trying to shut off the exits and what have you, and we've seen some results on that. Have you all got with the county and talked about any alternatives to what they're doing and what else could be done?
So in terms of the ramp management program, we have it both on the eastern and western shores. I'm going to limit this to the eastern shore, but if you had, if you meant that for both sides, let me know. So one, certainly, we partnered with the county to have a series of public meetings kind of leading up to a lot of information put out to kind of make them aware of specifically the locations that we would control at Route Eight and at Duke Street that the county would control. As I mentioned, we know that beyond that, there is congestion that can still occur on Main Street during certain really significantly congested periods, but for the vast majority of the days, the ramp management program as designed is working quite well. We've, the data we presented at the BRAG recently and also at the Broadneck Peninsula Meeting to kind of show some of the data and how that's been working for both sides. In terms of expanding that, there have been some kind of preliminary discussions about other potential alternatives to kind of control more of Main Street. We do have some concerns about that. Currently, we close off the crossover near the Queenstown outlets. When we do that, that would limit any ability to get on Main Street from that point, and then if we work with the county to prohibit further movements, it just creates a very long detour for the residents that live back near that crossover, back near the outlets. So it's a discussion we really need to have further. I think for next year, unless anything kind of changes, we, we see that the current program is what we expect to maintain, that, you know, largely, there was a lot of frustration perceptions about how it would work, but we saw that it did work quite well, you know, for the portions that it was controlling. Beyond that, we'd be happy to partner with the county if they wanted to pursue other options, but we do, we have some concerns that we need to work.
Okay, there's nothing coming from the state to sit back and say, we're going to dig deeper into this for the, because you've got both sides of that bridge you have the problem on, and there's nothing proactive going on from the state then?
Meaning in terms?
Trying to, trying to find a better way, if there is a better way, is there anything else we could do, or are there more things that the county could possibly do to help alleviate that problem? It still is a mess, but we understand why it's a mess. And a lot of people believe that growth on Queen Anne, in Queen Anne's County is a big, major part of the problem with the traffic, and it isn't. And I think coming from something, getting some better feel for that would be more appropriate for the people here.
So we did pursue a lot of other alternatives to look at, are there ways to allow for more of a local-only access? We certainly have put signing up, encouraging folks to stay on 50. We've considered ideas of like setting up EZ Pass and gates, and there was a lot of different things that have been considered over time. Based on the Commerce Clause, if we prohibit access, we have to do that uniformly for everyone. We don't have a way of saying, you're good, you're not, you have to stay off the road. And so the plan that we have does that effectively. We give equal treatment to all motorists, it's essentially a detour plan, and that is legal and doesn't compromise federal funding. So we don't have, to the best of my knowledge, based on all of our legal reviews, the types of options that we are pursuing are the only ones that are legally available to us.
Legislatively, if there's something we could do, we'd be interested in thinking about that. The last one's an easy one, because I think your new pieces that you're putting in are a little bit wider in some areas, and everybody thinks you're going to put another lane over there. And I keep telling them, well, the bridge is right there, it's going to hurt it. So why is, why are they a little wider?
It's for some of the same reasons you've heard about people not liking the Bay Bridge, is that their narrowness, so it's a safety, giving shoulders on the bridge. And we won't be able to do that everywhere, so through trust sections, we'll be narrower, but where we can go wider, we're doing that.
Okay, good, that's all I got for now. Thanks.
Just, just real quick regarding the ramp closure program. So obviously, the crossover at the outlets has been huge, because people can't make that left on the 18, but all they're doing is going up to Nesbit Road and getting off and crossing over at Chester River Beach or Hess Road, but they're eventually getting onto 18 in Graysonville anyway. So I guess really, the delegates' question was, what are our plans, what are, what are your plans moving forward to enhance reducing the amount of cars that are allowed to get onto 18 at Hess Road or at Nesbit? I mean, if there's not anything right now, I mean, we presented a 12 or 13 ramp closure program to you a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, and we understand that resources don't allow for that entire program, and we get it, and we appreciate your partnership. And, and some of the comments that we've been getting from our citizens have said, thank you very much, you know, that ramp closure, though it's inconvenient for some folks, it has helped the greater good. But again, those folks that are living at Cox Neck Road all the way back for years and years and years have had to deal with 18 where they can't even get out of their own communities. And again, the crossover's helped, but all they're doing is just getting on after that exit, so.
No, we, I hopefully articulated it well, that during the really exceptional backup periods, we do see that where folks are using the overpasses to still hit Main Street. There are some challenges for the hospital access, for the residents that live on Main Street but back closer to the outlets where the crossover's closed off. So we're happy to sit down and talk to the county and kind of like work together on, for your residents, what is a reasonable program. We know that with the closure that we're already doing, residents that live south of 50 had a lot of aversion to what amounts to, most of the time, less than a five-minute detour. The residents that live further back near Queenstown would have a much larger detour. You're talking about going down near Canton Arrows and coming all the way back. So we want to make sure that if we pursue that, I did have a, not to say anything about Commissioner Moran, he's not here, I did have a brief conversation.
Go ahead and talk about him when he's not, that's fine, we all do.
I did talk to him and say that, you know, we're, we're interested in discussing it further, but at this point, we have some concerns about the feasibility of actually doing that and not impacting a sizable portion of the residents and those needing to access the hospital.
So a list of those legitimate reasons and concerns are important, because obviously, these are the questions that we're formulating questions to you to answer. These are the same questions that we're getting from our constituency. So, you know, it's an educational process for us as well, that, you know, these are our legitimate concerns. If you close this ramp, you know, at this particular time, this is the effect you're going to have at Hess Road or Nesbit Road where the emergency center is. I mean, this is information that we can certainly give our constituents, saying, look, this is why they can't do it. I know it's frustrating, but this is why they can't do it. So help us with how we can answer our constituents.
Sure, we'll schedule a follow-up, I'll work through Todd, get something on the books to chat in more detail on specifics.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so I'm just going to make a couple of comments, and I do have one Bay Bridge question. The reason why I'm just making the comments is mainly it's going to be directed to you guys and for the benefit of our residents in Queen Anne's County, because I've already asked the questions at our last meeting. And so my biggest concern and my, really, my biggest priority in regards to transportation is funding for road resurfacing, road patching, system preservation. And it's a very legitimate concern, and it has everything to do with revenue, and right now, everything has to do with revenue when it comes to the state budget. We're, we're going to have over a billion-dollar budget shortfall coming into FY '26, it's going to go to 1.3 billion in FY '27, and Department of Transportation isn't obviously immune to those revenue issues that we have and those challenges that we have. However, this is a real existential threat to our rural parts of the state, and the fact that we have to maintain our roads and we have to maintain, especially our bridges. If you don't maintain a bridge, that road's shut down. If you maintain your, if you fail to maintain your roads, you can always make a detour somewhere else to get to wherever your destination is. We've done a great job over the last several years, especially using federal stimulus money to redo a lot of our bridges. We've done that in Queen Anne's County, we've done it throughout our entire district. One of the biggest concern I have is road resurfacing. For District Two, as you guys know, it's Queen Anne's, Kent, Cecil, Carolina, and Talbot Counties, there's five counties in District Two. And for us to be able to maintain a schedule of road resurfacing, we need about $65 million to do that, and we have fewer than $10 million in FY '25 for road resurfacing. That can't continue, obviously, because you have to maintain a schedule as you move forward. And I'm very thankful that the Secretary had mentioned that as a priority, and I know it's sincere, and I know the administration is sincere as well, but it really is going to come down to whether that money is going to be paid for or not, because obviously, there's a cost associated with that. So that is a very serious threat, because we're going to start seeing if that, those effects of deferred maintenance probably in the next five or six years, and it will only get worse after that. At this level of funding that we have right now, about $9.5 million, I think is what we have in the district, so. But that's, I hope that's going to stay on you guys' radar as well, I know it's on the Secretary's radar, and I think it's on the administration's radar as well. I guess my question for the Bay Bridge, and I honestly don't know the answer to this, this is not one of those questions where you know the answer before you ask it, are we in a similar situation when it comes to maintenance? I know it's a completely different revenue source, and that's not through tolls, are we as much of a dire situation with maintenance of the bridge in the next decade or two as we are with our, with our roads?
No, sir, I mean, we have a vigorous system preservation program, and with the toll, with the Transportation Authority being, you know, that total revenue being dedicated to our bonding capacity, we don't, we have exactly the same concerns. Now, you know, we need to revisit our revenue streams, just like MDOT does, so that, if it comes up, you're aware of that in the General Assembly, so, but, you know, we're in pretty good shape with all the system preservation that we are doing and maintaining.
Right, okay. That's the only question I have.
So that's our delegation. Any of you guys have any follow-up questions or anything you want to ask?
No, they have their questions.
You have a question, Patrick?
I do.
Go ahead.
You had mentioned, first off, thanks for being here, really appreciate it. I feel it's make-o-all over again, you know? You had mentioned that to do the, to do the exit program for local, it's all or none. You either let nobody on, or everybody has to get on, and you alluded to federal funding. Did I understand that correctly?
That is correct. Commerce Clause is a federal rule.
So here's my question, if we could get the Department of Transportation in Washington to allow us to do a one-off, say, a few weeks or a month pilot program on Route Eight and Route 18, would you allow us to try to do that? If we could get them to put in writing that they will not affect federal funds to the state of Maryland to allow Queen Anne's County to get a control of their roads, would you support us on that?
Let me say, I already have quite a bit in writing from them, some of which we, it's actually posted on the BRAG website. I think a starting point is to share what we've already received, where they did send us letters saying that that would compromise our funding. We have information that already.
But let's just say we could pull that off, right? New administration, different secretary, would you give us a shot? Would you allow us to try?
I think it would have to be a decision of the county with you, because again, some of the ramifications of that, I think we'd have to really work through that, but clearly, that would, at least that would open that discussion.
Yeah.
If that were to occur, but I can't commit right here that we would do that, because I think there are a lot of issues, you know, other issues that we'd have to deal with if we were to do that.
If I could comment, why, why am I like greatly pausing? So, for example, the Canton Arrows tourism area has been very vocal when we discussed the larger plans not to do any closures because of the impacts to the businesses. And so they know that there are residents that aren't Marylanders, and maybe are, maybe they live on the western shore and are traveling for tourism purposes. Those businesses like the travel going through there and using Main Street, so we, it needs to be a conversation, I hesitate to say anything firmly on your ask.
I sit on that Canton Arrows Development Foundation board, and they have some very valid concerns, you know, regarding, but it also works the opposite, too. Sometimes their employees can't even get there because the traffic is so bad. But then again, you know, locals can't go to the restaurants because they can't even get there, so.
I'm going to check off, I had this, close the Bay Bridge to locals only, but I think you're not going to, you're not going to go along with that one, so that was my question.
Yeah, that'll work, that'll work.
I was, I was going with the combines to park the bridge when necessary.
Bruce, I wanted to.
Bruce, I wanted to say, I actually got on the Bay Bridge at like one o'clock on a Saturday afternoon in August, just to find out why it's backed up for thirteen miles. And I've done this multiple times over the years, and it just seems like when you get up to the top of the bridge and you start coming down at that curve with this beautiful state park, you got everybody rubbernecking, looking at the state park, and it starts the domino effect of people hitting their brakes, and then that goes all the way to the split and to the Canton Arrows. So, so I think we talked about this at Make-Au.
We did.
As soon as you go over the bridge on your way home today, by the way, how was the traffic coming over?
Been up and around. It started in Cecil.
But they had to be up in Cecil County. It made no sense for them to go that way.
Mr. Secretary, I know, I know you traveled the bridge more than Bruce.
Excuse me, every time I, in fact, I'll be doing it this weekend. Every time I go down there, I look for that issue. I think that can be part of it. I think there's, as you know, it's the, it's, it is the geometry of that road at that point. It's, it's both in terms of the horizontal curve, what we call horizontal curves, and the, and the vertical curve, I think plays into that. But you're right, I mean, people do, they start looking around a little bit more, I can see it.
My point is, as soon as you leave here and you go over, as soon as you come down, look on the right, there's a, there's Jersey walls with green vertical blinds on them. They're all over the, the Beltway, so that you don't look into the other side. If we could put those on the railings, on that curve, six feet high, people would not look at the beautiful park there and create backups. It's just one little, one little.
You also have to look at, it breaks the wind. On the structure.
Well.
Because that creates a sail on top of the bridge, which is.
Well, yeah. You have to, you have to put a piece on top to, to hold the structure together.
Which, again, with wind testing on bridges.
Send him to your office next week, and just make a room for him and, you know, for a few days.
Take a look at it.
So, yeah, just to be clear, Will's a structural engineer, I am not, so I, you know, I'm relying on what I've heard before. So we did, did have that kind of effort on the eastbound side about twelve, fifteen years ago. Not six feet, because that comes up with different issues than if you have ever seen, I know it doesn't happen often, but with ice and snow clearance operations, you know, those, those become, you know, kind of a challenge, in addition to, you know, just putting a sail-type structure on the bridge. I mean, we had issues years ago with, with paint, you know, canvases on the bridges, some of you may recall back in twenty-twelve. So, you know, all those things to have to look at and determine if that, you know, that kind of view over there is, is going to be a problem, but I've heard you for the second time, and you're on the record publicly, so.
You can work on it.
Yeah, well.
And develop a new bridge, though, right, the design, because you can, you could build in the effects of the structure of that into a newer bridge, but to an existing one, it's...
I think that's just one of the, one of the small variables that ultimately affected. People get on the bridge, you talk about widening the bridge, so people can feel a little more comfortable, because when they're on fifty, it's wide, and they, and all of a sudden, now they get on the bridge, and it's restrictive, and they start, and they slow down a little bit, get a little white-knuckled, and so it's a lot of the different things that are ultimately affecting it. And I don't think it's an easy, it's not just one thing for that, for that fix, it's a, some of the things we have to live with. I think, I think it's okay for you at this point to just say, Commissioner, we think that's a great idea, but no, we're not going to do it.
Fortunately, my predecessor is here as well to help his mystery, but.
And, and there's been a number of presentations on this topic. We've heard from my time at the authority, every reason under the sun for why the traffic exists at the Bay Bridge. And what I can say most succinctly is, it's a number of lanes and the volume issue. The, the idea that westbound is the only issue because of visual distractions, right? Well then, why do we have traffic eastbound, right? Every thread you pull as to theories for other traffic problems, you run into the fact that we have five lanes on the bridge, you have six lanes on the approaches, the volumes exceed in both directions. The earlier question was, why are, from Delegate Jacobs, was, why are we experiencing westbound backups during the day? If you go back to the 2015 lifecycle study, it predicted that in 2020, you would experience simultaneous backups on, in both directions at the same time, and that that was purely based on the volume that would increase from 2015 to 2020. And that report also said that that would just continue to increase over time based on volume growth. It's a volume problem, I know that's not the answer, everybody wants to pull the lever that would.
Look at aerial photos of Ocean City, Bethany, and Rehoboth Beach from nineteen seventy and look at it now. The amount of high rises, it's explosive growth, and all those cars come through this way, and it's a funnel, and you're trying to put a gallon through a pipe.
Us Midtown.
Anybody else?
Yes, I do, actually. First, I want to thank you, Will and Kenny, for doing something in four oh five. What I would like to see is the results of the study, and from probably a different angle than you're thinking, I want to see what the accidents were. I know for a fact, we went two and a half months without an accident in four oh five, which gave our Churchill firefighters a big relief for two and a half months. But I'd also like to see what it was at nineteen and the rest stop, if there was an uptick. I don't believe there was, but I'd like to see that. So if you guys could share that information, that'd be great. And then, Stephen, if you could share our counters, because I think the southbound traffic is definitely increased since the bridge got collapsed, so, based on our numbers that we were just given a couple of months ago. And I guess I got to jump on the red X bandwagon. So as somebody who, like Delegate Aaron's drives it every day, and get very frustrated when I see somebody come flying up in the red X next to me, one of the things I notice is we have yellow Xs, we need to do away with those, because people just disregard them completely. The other thing is, can we make them flash? Because flashing will bring people's attention to it, because quite frankly, I think people are just in another world. And what's sad about it is, these are not the vacation travelers we're dealing with on daily basis. This is commuters that do it every day, so they are doing it every day. So we need to retrain them not to do it every day, and that may take some fines. Two of the things, and I know we're short, we need more police to enforce the laws we have. We don't need more laws, we need more police, because speeds on three oh one southbound right now, it might as well be the autobahn. I mean, the other day, I'm going past Centerville, and thank God there was an MSB not too far up the road, a guy passed me doing at least a hundred, and he got him, which I cheered, I even rolled my window down and yelled out at it, it was, it was a great moment. But more police presence will retrain people. But, you know, I'm just, and I know that's out of your control, but I'm just saying, and, and we're talking about needing funds, that's one way to get some funds, because what I see coming southbound, there's not many Maryland tags there. We could get some of that out-of-state money and take advantage of it. But again, it's just, I know it's very difficult, and I know you guys have limited funding, but the whole X thing, there's got to be a way to bring attention to those Xs, because right now, they do nothing.
Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, you thinking it's not in our control, but actually, police, you know, enforcement is in some of our control, because it is MDT police out there in partnership with, with the sheriffs and everything. So as I mentioned earlier, I mean, we have really tried to ramp up on that over this, I mean, I'm looking at statistics between January and September, and it's a, it's a very, very significant increase in enforcement out there. So hopefully, we got to unfortunately probably keep that up to really retrain people on that. That effort will be ongoing, so, you know, we're not going to back off in that. With the yellow to red, I mean, we have to provide some, some warning. So, you know, we'll look at, you know, other alternatives, it's probably, as Will probably will say to me later, you know, require going back to the federal government and saying, well, what can you, you do differently? Because when you do those things, it's like, they only have a certain bag of tricks that we can try, and we got to push them harder, and we might want that letter to, you know, USDOT on something that we can do experimental on, on red Xs. So, you know, we'll definitely keep in partnership on those types of efforts.
And lastly, the one that, and Jim, Jim brings it up every year, and I see it too more and more, is the, is enforcing the trucks in the right lane, the thirteen thousand GVW. I mean, it's, it's not just trucks, it's, I mean, full-size campers, Winnebago's, they're all over thirteen thousand GVW, but you see them in the middle and left lane all the time, and to the point of things slowing down, that's what happens. You take something that large, and it's got to slow down. Everything behind it, it can't get back up to speed like a regular car can, and then that just becomes, you know, exponential backwards, so. And like I said, traveling it every day, I can tell you a lot of the things I see that are just, and not that they're correctable, but it's just like you see, you know, human nature at its finest, unfortunately, so.
Okay, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. It was good seeing you again.
MVA gets off too easy here, no question, right?
People don't go, oh my God, I go to the NBA. Hey, Bruce, we're going to take a five-minute.
Test, test.
I want you somewhere too, but he's on the far left.
I'm on the far right.
Further right than him. Sadly, we're left on you, though.
What's that?
We got you, we're on your left, he's on our right, so that's kind of confusing.
That's confusing, delegate. Very confusing.
All right.
Okay, we're gonna bring this meeting back to order. We have our 36th district delegation who's visiting with us today. You guys are making your rounds. So, thank you very much. And I guess the good senator's gonna go first? Or are we going first?
I think we go first.
Please, you guys go first.
Okay, so our list isn't that long, right, Jack?
Um, no, it's long.
Well, I mean, I mean, I mean, we could dispense with number one, the red Xs. I think you guys all know kind of where we stand on that one, so.
Yeah, so, um, you know, again, that's why I brought that up while we were asking some of the questions is, is one, I think there's, there's still probably an education process that has to go on as well, too, to let commuters know that they need to not be going through red Xs. And as we've heard before, it is comparable to going through a red light. So, but I, I wouldn't be assured that most people know that. I think it's, I think in, in, in many people's minds, it's just, they have to get over it. Some period of time, that lane's gonna close, but it's not necessarily, you cannot go under that gantry of the red lights there.
Oh, and most of them, I think they think it's optional.
Yeah, well, I think one that, you know, as-
Odd days, even days.
As, as we look at, you know, how we handle this, I think, you know, one, do we go through a number of solutions? And one, it's probably a little bit more of an, an education on what's, what's there, what's allowed and what's not allowed. Enforcement certainly is, is a, a direction. And, and I was, I was just talking to Executive Director Gardner. I'm, I'm, you know, there, there's still debate on is, is that the best strategy to shut down a lane for a length of time and merge a half mile back as opposed to merge, you know, zipper merging at the last minute? All the way at the point where that lane is closed down. And, and, and we both have seen studies to, to show both are, are something worth looking at. So, I think that's probably an option to, to see, too. And, and he, as he was just mentioning, you know, when, at, at one of the tunnels, you know, you have seven lanes merging down into two lanes. And, you know, they're not shutting down these lanes for that length of a time, but they're shutting down a portion, a portion, and portion. So, so maybe there's a few things to take a look at before we reach into the area of, of legislation. But certainly willing to, to work with you guys on, on trying to find some solutions for this.
So, I mean, I mean, you have to think careful about asking for red light cameras. Because the next person who gets a ticket because they drove through that red X, you know, now you've just created an enemy. You know? But at the same time, there was an accident the other night. And I can, and you can, you can tell by the photographs of the end result of the accident, where the cars were situated. The guy in, in the, the green lane did not let the guy in the red lane over by the time he got to the, to the, the gate. And, and you can tell, and there was an accident, and I mean-
That's, that's to your point. There's, there is going to be an incident, yeah, there's gonna be an incident there that's gonna be bad.
And, and then, and then, of course, the road rage and the anger.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's what's gonna happen.
I think more signage would help, some ideas as well, too. You know, really what's allowed and what's not allowed and what these yellow Xs mean, what red Xs mean.
People that just need to change their behavior. That's all they have to do is change their behavior.
If you get any kind of commitment from, from, you know, the state highway or state police that they will enforce it, then you can always do a public service announcement through QAC and start educating people. I gotta tell you, I got a citation about 20 years ago for running a red X down there.
Well, the, the problem is-
No, I know they did do it.
There is no way for them to legitimately safely pull you over on the other side.
Right.
It's very difficult because you're sitting there, you got a closed thing, people are coming down there. And they don't have the manpower to enforce it. And it was suggested earlier, it's been suggested a few times, get rid of it. It's not serving the purpose you want it to serve. And that may be an alternative. The senator was talking about that just a minute ago also. But there are supposedly studies that say that works. Well, it doesn't work unless it's enforceable. Not enforceable at this point.
Right.
You may be able to do it over here because you can pull me off the side of the road and you have cops that are around. But I've been on this road where I've seen people, they have somebody pulled over and they wave somebody around in the lane. I said, well, that's not the purpose. Tag them, make them wait, but as soon as you do that, you do it with the liability of somebody coming up really fast and you got a serious, serious accident. And people dead. You don't want to lose that, so.
But again, to your point, too, that is, this would be a quick deterrent, is where that first red X is, you put an MDTA car there. I don't care if you put somebody in it. Every time you turn those Xs red, put a car there so that at least that merge point is back.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to do just what you do with them, if you've got road work. You're gonna have to put four cars there. You're gonna have to tell me it's coming, and then it's coming, and you're gonna have somebody slow it down. If you look at highway, when we're working on a highway, you go on to Bay Bridge right now, you got a truck slowing you down, stopping you with big lights. And maybe that's it, but I'm not sure they'll do that because I just think there's a safety issue. But you're right, I agree with you, something's gotta be done, or don't do it at all.
Right, okay. Chris, you got the next one, I believe. You've been working diligently on that one.
Yeah, so the abandoned boat law, this is one that we had tried last year. And the citizens who had asked for it last year are asking me to put forth this again. So, the issue that we have is there's some areas where there's people, there's pilings that are, that are in the water. They, they weren't issued, they didn't go through MDT to have a permit to put the pilings in there. And then you'll have derelict boat owners that will raft up the boats to it and they'll leave them there for a long period of time. Right, years. They're, they're not checking the lines, and so the lines are snapping in storms, and then the boats are running into piers and causing damage. Or they're doing nothing and the boats are sinking. And now we got hazardous materials that are going into the bay. We've tried to craft this, but that we're, we're taking into consideration, we know that, that watermen will use them temporarily for safe harbor. So, this is just geared towards recreational boats, only not commercial boats. And it's for boats that are there for a long period of time. If somebody's out in the recreational boat, they're having engine trouble, they have to rope up to something, and they're gonna get a mechanic out there and that boat's gone in 30 days. That doesn't seem to be the problem that we're having. It's the ones that are there long term. So, we've really tried to tailor this to address specifically that issue. It has, it's a real problem down around Thompson Creek and some other areas. Bruce and I have met with Department of Natural Resources to say, we're gonna try to do this again. Let us know what your concerns are, what needs to be tailored on it to try to get it past the, the finish line on this. But, go ahead.
You're working with DNR on this, you say?
Yeah, we, we met with Dylan.
So, the language, whatever they come up with should be language.
I may just interject, the commissioner and I met with Dylan in our in-person, had a very productive meeting, I really thought. He's looking into some things based on the legislation of last year. There's some good thing in there, he thinks particularly how the sticker, you know, reads and stuff like that. He's gonna get back to us. But he was extremely sympathetic, I mean, and, and saw that there was real merit and real problem. And that what can be done within what was passed, but if not, could build upon. Delegate Aaron Steed, the, the bill that you and Senator Alfred had to, to further address this. So, there, there was, the important thing is it was very positive of DNR. Check with the superintendent and what have you. And I will follow up, I was giving him a little time to check things out.
Are you reporting these boats currently? Are you, you're reporting them, and what's DNR doing with them today?
They, they're saying, well, we don't know that they're abandoned boats because they're just out there moored.
Once you report a boat theoretically, you're supposed to be able to put a sticker on it. That's what we talk-
So, that's the new law that just went into effect?
But you haven't, we haven't done that yet, so that's gonna be a little bit difficult. We put the sticker on it, they, they have X number of days, I think it's, what is it? Forget what it was, there's a number of days they have to respond to that.
Right.
And the DNR will react to it after that. And I think the other part was numbers on a boat, you could trace it with numbers. If they don't have numbers, that's why the sticker's there.
Right.
And you say that's-
Some of them we've been able to trace, and we've, we've sent letters to the owners saying, you don't own that piling, you shouldn't be there.
But the purpose of the amendment was you put that sticker on there, if you don't do something, well, it becomes our boat.
Right.
And I, I don't know that we've given that fair effect. If we're putting more legislation in, they're gonna say, well, what about today? What about what we're doing today, how's that gonna work for you? But I agree, I, I'm good with it because I get the same point you do.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, that's why we're putting it out there again.
The other part of this is those, those pilings are not really owned by anyone.
They're not.
And that's, that's a big piece of, it's ambiguous to them why that is and why they don't have control over that. Because you literally could go out there and grab one and put one in the thing and it's yours. And that's not what we were looking for. Because they're doing it in residential communities, and they got places where they have these, these pilings, and then somebody will just put their boat over there and they'll leave it for a couple of months. And I'm trying to get my boat out, I'm wondering where these boats coming from. And that's a part of the problem. I'd be interested in being in on those meetings to further enhance that legislation.
Yep.
Delegate, I'm gonna follow up with Dylan, as I said, I want to give him a little time since the meeting we had. He's gonna check into the language on that sticker, which is very important. And I'll, I'll obviously get back to everybody with what he reports.
And then we're gonna discuss that, the sticker which just went into effect.
They were very cooperative. In other words, they, they're recognizing, willing to build on it if necessary.
And that also goes, I, I might put the bill and the amendment in, but that, that goes into his committee, too. So, Jay can help us on that side, too.
We'll keep you guys posted on that. Thank you.
So, the next one is more opening up the impact fees, what it can and can't be used for. And I think the time is right for this one, and the reason I say that is because obviously revenue, finding revenue for things is an issue. And this gives the counties a tool in the toolbox to, you know, we, we send a lot of money that we can't utilize because it can only be used for certain things. So, to be able to utilize it for some more-
This is the same bill we had last year.
Uh, yeah, but with, I thought we were gonna make it even more broader, because I know Mako's putting something similar in.
Last year, we made it a statewide bill, I believe. We were maybe gonna go for it as a local bill next year, based on your-
Is this gonna have Mako support?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think they are gonna craft something similar, or they're gonna get behind something similar anyway, so. Because it's all, well, let me, let me put it this way. And the Mako bill is in there, we're gonna call the revenue bill, or like alternative revenue sources. It's gonna be one of the items in that, so.
You, you know, we met a lot of resistance with builders, we met a lot of resistance with people that actually do these things, sitting back saying, no, my dollars were meant to be paid, be spent here to this. That's what, that's what your impact fees-
And the builders are saying, we paying impact fees?
We're paying impact fees for a specific reason, to, to address A, B, C, and D. And that's why they resisted that bill. If you can come up with another reason, we get, we're gonna need something to get over that hurdle. But I, I, you know, I, we presented that last year, so I'm, I'd be more than willing to put it in again. But I'd like a little more help on it, maybe, maybe get a redefine, if you think it'll pass, get a definition.
So, A, B, and C is, C is school capacity, traffic, right? And, and-
You're using it for maintenance now, but you want to use it for maintenance. And that isn't what the impact fees were originally meant for. They were meant to build schools, they were meant to do these things.
Initial infrastructures.
And that's where you run into a problem. But I mean, like you said, I presented last year, I'd be more than happy to. If we could get Mako on board with this, that would make it a little bit better. But you gotta get your, you gotta get the other counties involved in this, too. Not everybody is in Queen Anne's County's position. Some of them are struggling, some can't afford to build a school.
Well, so this one goes hand in hand, and I know it's not on here, but it goes hand in hand with the whole POS, which you can use POS for, and I know Caroline's behind that one. So, that, like I said, that's even gonna be in one of the larger Mako bills as part of that same thing, so. Yes, sir.
On that, Commissioner, DNR's been very receptive, and there's gonna be an amendment giving flexibility on POS.
Perfect.
Caroline County with what, what they want, so hopefully that general language could be helpful with Queen Anne's as well. But those- They're, they're too, working with Dylan, and it's apparent some larger bill on POS, and they're gonna put that in there to give flexibility to the counties. So, I think that's all positive.
That's good. Okay. So, next one's cannabis setbacks to try to get it from the 500 to 1,000. And I know this one's gonna hit some headwinds, but maybe-
No, it may not. I'll tell you what, we've had a lot of experience right now with cannabis and how it's being distributed.
You guys personally?
But I never know. No, not me personally, but we have, we have some background right now. We've seen some things happening, and I think there's, they, you've seen they've moved some other areas. We're looking at other areas to address some of these shortfalls we found with the cannabis spill in the first place. So, there is something out there. I'd, like I said, I'd be more than willing to run by them again. We did that last year, we tried to move that. And again, keeping in mind, I tried to stress the fact that, you know, Queen Anne's County and counties like rural counties such as us, we don't have the luxury of having a bunch of malls that we can put stuff in, a bunch of areas of commercial property where we can do it. And I preached that, and they started nodding a little bit, then they got away because we had, we were at the end of session when it was really coming through. So, be more than happy again, put that back in and try to fight that battle for you.
I, I'd add that you're gonna need to get a, a bigger constituency that wants to get on board with this as well, too. You know, rather than just one county. Because of the same reasons Delegate just said. We, we tried to keep this in at the very end. Prince George's County had something in that dealt with the churches, and even that was cut back from what they were looking at. So, there's a lot that goes on with the decisions on what they made for these things. Not saying that, you know, we, we shouldn't try to do it, but we're gonna have to build a much bigger group of, of, you know, if we're changing a statewide, you know, restriction of regulation. We're gonna need to-
Isn't that what Mako's supposed to help us do?
President Mako. I mean, yes.
No, and we do have, we have quite a few of the counties on board with it.
But I think Prince George's had some legislation in last year that moved some things around.
I think, I think literally it was, it ran out of time. And I think it had some, I think it had some backing.
It makes sense.
It was the last minute, and it was one of the final sticking points of the, you know, of the citing bill altogether.
So, but with that being the case, is it, is it tradition that when you guys get back there in January, that it's, that it'll be on the forefront of everybody's thought process just because it came in late towards the end of session? Will it be a priority in the beginning?
Well, for, for those that want to see a bigger restriction, sure. But for those that pass the bill and don't want to see that, you know, it's-
Are they the majority?
Yes.
In that case, you know, but, but-
An uphill battle.
But one of the good things is, you know, again, is we, we look at these broader policy bills, especially, you know, legalizing for recreational use. There are a number of things that are going to come back that need to be revised. I mean, obviously, the biggest thing, one of the biggest things that, that we fought, that the counties had to absorb all these dispensaries and got a fraction of the revenue that came. I mean, I mean, in, in the case that you, you may get $160,000 this year, total. You know, I mean, that's how low the numbers were on what these counties, you know, their share of this was. And I think we're starting to see some pushback, you know, especially from the bigger counties. And saying, hey, you know, we're not getting anything out of this. You know, it's all going to, to other different programs and, and so that might come up. Municipalities got very limited out of it. I think that the, the language at the end was the counties could give the municipalities a fraction of what they got if they wanted to. But that wasn't specific either. So, so we may see a bill that comes back to try to make adjustments, and that would probably, not saying that we couldn't put something in, but that might be the best avenue to try to at least bring this up for discussion again.
Chris, anything?
So, the next one is the Board of Ed.
Erwin.
No, 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 this is the, to expand. Via appointment versus election.
Yep.
I, I've gone, and I, I think we all have kind of gone both ways with this one, it's, you know, do you want more responsibility as a commissioner, or do you not want more responsi- And I, I think finally I've fallen on the side that, no, I do not. But, I mean, so I, I'm all with just scrapping that one, honestly.
Can I just touch on that? First of all, I, I, from my, my standpoint as a delegate, where I get to reference people and recommend people for certain positions, we have to look at what we've been able to, we've tried to get people for the Board of Ed in the past. The last election, one election, we, we had how many people running at large with no, nobody unopposed because they were write-ins?
We got two right now unopposed, and last time, two that were-
Two, right.
You're not really getting a lot of people to come up and jump at these positions. We've advertised them, we beg people to run for them. And as a legislator, as a ex-one of you all, I don't know that, I think, and I mentioned this earlier- this earlier, if I appoint somebody or we, you appoint somebody, they're going to be the first point of contact that they're going to blame. Your guy, you're politicizing it.
That's right.
And I think that will be a pitfall. But it's, it's, could be your decision. I don't know if you're allowed to do that. I don't know what the process is to actually get that enabled. But it would be a, I think it would be a tough pull personally for me to do that if I were in charge. I don't know. That would be my biggest drawback. I don't, we don't have a lot of people that are jumping up and down for these things. You know, somebody came up with an idea a few years ago, we should give them a stipend, we should pay them. You know, that would, that would bring good people in. And I say, I don't know that to be true. But the school board is a, I mean, if you think about how important that school board is, that they handle 50% of your money. I mean, that's where it's coming, or more, when you start looking at everything else. It's a big, big position. I think more people should get involved in that personally. I think we should have people sitting by begging to be on that because that is the biggest part of your life, one of the biggest parts of your life as a commissioner and our life as state.
Trying to get education.
Education is huge. You've seen the debacle, or you've seen the issues we're running into with Kerwin. And that's not just with Queen, that's not with Queen Anne's County, Kent County, that's across the board. You know, I think we're seeing a lot of these things that we put in place, they're coming back and they're saying, oopsie, we, we can't do this. We don't know how to do this. I'm seeing that with Kerwin. I'm seeing a lot of that with energy right now and how we're going to have to address all these things. So some of the stuff that we've talked about in the past to try to fight some of these bills, it's, the good news or bad news, it's coming into fruition. We're starting to say, well, you know, what are we going to do for baseload power? What are we going to do for this? What are we going to do for pre-K? How are we going to accommodate that?
It's the difference between where good intentions and the rubber hits the road.
Absolutely. And I mean, most bills have, are coming with a good point, but there are some other things and consequences. But I would, I would be hesitant if I were you, but that's probably your decision more than mine.
I'm all for killing it.
I wouldn't hesitate at all. I would not do it. The reason why I say that, it was like 15, 16 years ago in Caroline County, it was all appointed. And we were like, so why the heck is the governor, they were appointed by the governor? And why aren't those the governor, you know, deciding who are-
It's happening in our-
In our county. So we put a bill in and we fought like, you know what, to get that bill passed to have it all elected. And so I think that was the Glenn Danning administration, maybe. They didn't want to give up control because they thought that Caroline County residents weren't sophisticated enough that we were racist and we wouldn't have any minority members of our school board. So they wanted it to be a hybrid. So they changed the bill. And they do that often. Like we think we have good bills that go through the legislature and suddenly our good bills turn into not so good bills because they amend them, right? And so they would do the same thing for yours. You won't appoint these people. I can guarantee you that. It'll be the governor's office that will more than likely appoint these two. And be careful what you wish for. You're going to wish you didn't have those other two members if the governor appoints those. I'm just telling you, I would steer clear completely of this.
Yeah.
Good segue onto Kerwin.
I would agree.
Delegate on the Kerwin funding. So, and I guess I'm going to skip down, Phil, if you don't-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To the budget priorities under the state education funding. I think, I don't know if it's shared with you, but we can certainly share, we had a presentation last meeting and kind of went through the steps of Kerwin and where we sit funding wise versus what the state's giving Queen Anne's County. And one of the biggest glaring problems, and, and again, I know you're going to say it's funding, but, but there's no reason for that from the state's standpoint to say, oh, well, we can't give you everything we promised you when you're telling us we've got to give 35% more. So all I want is what I have on my sheet that says the state was going to give us when they passed this bill four years ago, which is a very conservative number by comparison to where we're at in terms of percentage over funding. And I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's $1.3 million. But the halls of Queen Anne's County Board of Ed were going to fall over $1.3 million because that's literally what the gap was that they were fighting over, over there at, at the end of the budget set, you know. So all we're seeing is just make us whole on what was put out originally. And I'm talking about the very, the 2019 version of the funding. Make us whole on that. Like it's, it's not that much. It really isn't. And we've made up the rest, but we can't keep making up the rest because we're looking at another eight to nine percent increase next year. So it's, it's going to become unfundable.
So this is a hot topic for Mako. And it was last year at Mako Conference, not, I guess this past time when some reported last. So where, what is the position of the other counties across? And obviously you're not in a unique position. Every county's in the same position that you guys are. And what we're telling folks at the county level is that do it the best you can and then what you can't do, just ask for waivers. Is this something, I mean, can, can we, can you guys continue to do that? Just fund what you can, whatever you feel comfortable with. So you're not going to, you're not going to stop funding EMS. You're not going to stop funding your road. You're not going to stop funding your other priorities, right? Over something that isn't-
So you can-
It's not underfunded.
Saying that here is great, but you got to convince 500, 670 teachers of that philosophy and that's not going to happen. I'm advocating for the teachers to go to Annapolis and help them out. They're the biggest lobbying group we have in the state of Maryland, but yet I don't see them down there going, the state's not funding enough. It's always the counties aren't funding enough and it's just not fair to the counties.
Are the other 23 jurisdictions funding that $60,000 and you guys aren't? I don't think that's the case. I can't, I'll bet you probably the only counties that are is probably Howard and Montgomery because they, they were paying them even for Kerwin. The cost of living was a priority there.
Well, part of, part of the problem is the way the overall formula works. And you all are well aware of the fact that Queen Anne's is fifth lowest in what we get from, a percentage from the state, whereas a county like Caroline gets, you know, 70% of their budget from the state. Well, and I get it, there's a wealth calculation. They throw all that stuff in there and the wealthy counties are supposed to pay their share. But we're also, and I made the point the other day, and I think it's lost on a lot of people, we also pay state taxes in that can go to Baltimore City, PG County and other counties that we never get back here. And yet we, as a county, are then asked one more time to step up, put more money in when the feeling should be, we sent it to the state. Just give us back, and again, it's $1.3 million this year, but in '27, that's where all the counties are concerned, to answer your question about the 24 jurisdictions. '27 is the fiscal cliff. You guys dealt with it last year. You saw it in the governor's budget. That's the big Kerwin fiscal cliff for the counties because that's when the teachers got to be at $60,000. Salary compression is going to exasperate that across the board. You've already got counties like Montgomery and Anarundel and all that are already above that because they can't get teachers, right? Because if you're going to make $60,000 in Somerset or you're going to make $60,000 in Baltimore City, which, which county would you maybe choose to live in, right? So they're already at 68. And we know what's going to happen. Then you're going to have all of your support staff, all the ancillary jobs are going to want the same thing. It's going to be salary compression. So that number we're looking at today is still nowhere near where it's going to be in '27.
And we warn them that of all those things that you just talked about when we voted against Kerwin to begin with. And it's coming to fruition and they know it. And so the magic number is FY '27, which is 2026, which is the next gubernatorial election, which is our next election and the rest of the 100, 288 members of the legislature. And so what they did, and I think it was very deliberate, is there was supposed to be an audit that was done of Kerwin that was due right this month.
Correct.
And they pushed that out until, guess what? The magic number of 2026, which is FY '27. So what's going to come out of this audit is the, are all these things that we're talking about now, they're going to scale all these things back. And what we have, it's a joint effort between the House Republicans and the Senate Republicans now, that the folks that are on E, well, it's not EHE anymore, AAA and Ways and Means and Appropriation, we're coming together with a list of things that just aren't working with Kerwin. Now, some of it we think has a chance of passing. Some, a lot of it probably won't right now, but we do think it will, a lot of these things will eventually pass in, in '26, which will be the first year of the next term. And generally, when you make, you know, land breaking legislation, it's usually done in the, or any tax increases, it's almost always done in the first year of any four-year term because people have such short-term memories. And we anticipate that that's going to happen now. So my suggestion would be to continue to get waivers until FY '27.
But what are you filing the waivers on? See, that's, that's my point.
Don't do it.
But where do you cut? What are you cutting? So you have restricted funds that have to go for ESL, comp ed and all that stuff. We can't touch those. We can't get waivers on them. We have them sitting in the bank where we can't use them.
Your blueprint coordinator should be able to answer that question. I don't-
Well, I know. We have the conversation. He doesn't know how to get them either. It's, but that's what I'm saying. The waivers to what? That we're not going to pay the teachers' salaries? That we're going to not, you know, pick your poison? I mean, are you going to waive?
The state's not going to be able to meet its financial obligation to the counties.
So what does the state's answer to that? I guess that's the question.
What's that?
What is the state's answer to that going to be to all the counties a year from now?
Well, they're going to come back this year and, and I think what we're going to see, and it's based on the comments that the governor made at his closing speech at Mako, was that big, huge pieces of legislation need changes. And where he's going to make changes or what he's going to be willing to accept and the general sum is going to be willing to accept, we don't know yet. But, but I think and a lot of conversations about Annapolis right now is, is this session is going to be the session of pushing things off, punting things till later and getting things to that magic next term. Because there, the state is in a fiscal crisis when it comes to Kerwin. And they don't have the money to pay for it. The counties are all coming back. Baltimore City are all coming back saying, we don't have the money to afford it either. And they're going to have to make some changes to it. And it might start slow and it might be something more substantial as we go forward. But in these next two legislative years, you know, with, with next year and the following year, we're, we're not going to see the state deal to make up that obligation.
I would coordinate it with other counties too. I mean, don't be the only county not funding. You're not going to be the only county not funding because I can tell you that.
Well, no, next year, you're going to see a lot more shoes dropped next year, yeah.
Should be a major priority for Mako.
Well, we did. We wrote, asked 24 jurisdictions last year from Mako. We wrote a letter with suggestions in it. And I don't know how far it got. It went to Governor's office, it went to legislature.
People, citizens, the voters need to talk about it. We have them come to our meetings, they call us. What is the, the best way for them to, I mean, we, we tell them that you guys have obviously voted against it. You tried to get more money for our county, but you're, no offense, but you're the minority voice, right? There's only so much you can do. What, what should the citizens of Queen Anne's County, who should they be reaching out to to try to effectuate some change or is-
I would say not only did we vote against it, but we've had legislation in the last three years that have addressed different parts of this.
Right, right. You guys have been advocates for us.
What we want to make sure that we can continue to try to change. You know, the, the location of pre-K was one of the big issues because we couldn't find a location to actually have kids. And we were trying to work with, with other groups that were trying to, you know, being able to, to take on those responsibilities. But the reality is, you know, there's, there's a lot of op-eds that are going in and out about Kerwin all the time. There's, obviously you're, you're, you're bucking up against the teachers' union, which is probably the most powerful advocacy group in, in Annapolis right now. But they are concerned about one portion of Kerwin, and that's the salaries.
Right.
You know, the, the, don't, don't, don't let the, the teachers' union fool you that they are concerned about the performance of students. You know, they, they are not. And we said very often, many times, who represents the students in Annapolis? You know, and I don't want to say it's just the Republicans, but it's certainly when we are fighting against this, we are concerned about performance. We are concerned about classroom environment. We bring all those issues up when we oppose Kerwin. And that's why we, most of us oppose it, not just for the cost, because it didn't address those very important items. And that's what needs to come out. The parents need to be out there saying, we want to make sure that our kids get, getting the proper education. And Kerwin doesn't focus on that as much as they'd like to say it. There is some preparedness. There is some, some important things. But it's not about getting the best results. It might be about closing the achievement gap, which is a little bit different. You know, you can bring some people up and some people down and you've closed the achievement gap, right? It doesn't mean that you've done this. And that's one of the things that we brought up. So it's got to be the parents out there that's saying that, you know, at the end of the day, we, we've seen that the most money per pupil doesn't mean the best results. And so we've got to say, what does it mean to get the best results? And you're fortunate, Queen Anne's County has one of the best public school systems in the state. I mean, they really do. You guys have done an outstanding job with that. And that's what we got to be able to push from the parent's side.
The other point of that is, is if you look at our district, three out of the four superintendents voted for Kerwin. And one of the problems when you start looking at that, there was no fiscal part of that assigned to those superintendents. They did not think about how we're gonna pay for that. And when I'm looking for somebody to run my education system, I need somebody that's gonna actually sit back and say, where are we gonna, where are we gonna get this money?
Right.
Because it isn't like I got a wealthy mom or dad here to pay for all this stuff. I have to actually find a way to pay for this. And when you're looking at people that are just going in there blindly, they're teaching your children, they don't have a vehicle to sit back and say at some point, how are we gonna afford this? I mean, first of all, building schools for pre-K kids? Where are you gonna get that kinda money? And, and that was a hard one for us to figure out. And we were at the forefront, talking about these things when Kerwin was being introduced. But you know what? When you're offering me a Cadillac full of candy bars versus a VW with nothing in it, I'm gonna take the Cadillac full of candy bars and worry about how you're gonna pay for it. And that's kinda where we got with this, because I don't see it doing anything. I mean, it does some nice things, it does raise some pay and all that stuff. Look at the other circumstances you guys are in. You know, you furloughed some people and you, you did some buyouts and stuff. And the, the public didn't take that as a good thing. They took that as, look at the money they're giving these people. They don't understand it. Some of these people are making a hundred grand. If you spend another couple bucks, you can afford to hire two teachers to beat Kerwin. And that's what you're getting saddled with. And that's not the best way to look at a business and thought the best way to run a business. So I, I'd be concerned about, when I'm talking, we talked about school board members. This is the area where people need to be becoming fiscally intelligent about it. I'm not saying you have to be pro or anti anything. You just have to sit back and say, treat this as if I'm paying my own bills. And it's gonna become a major issue for you.
I think our message should also be as positive as it possibly can about Kerwin. And, and I, I say that in the sense that we are doing a lot of innovative things. He mentioned pillar one, early childhood. So we do have our community action agencies actually partnering with MSD and collaborating with our federal Head Start program and our school systems to help with that space issue. We talk about, you know.
College career?
I mean, college and career readiness. You know, when we're partnering with Chesapeake College, where we have five, and this is unheard of, you know, we're gonna have five counties coming together and partnering with our school systems for tech ed. So we're doing things that nobody else is doing to, you know, and granted, we're, we're doing it for our own self-serving reasons, so we're making our kids smarter, right? And more marketable, you know? And that's the reason why we're doing it. But at the same time, you know, it is helping, you know, in a very innovative way to move Kerwin. So we're doing our very best. We're, we're trying. But at the end of the day, there's certain things that are just not attainable. And we're talking about teacher salaries. It was never indexed for cost of living at all. It's easier for Montgomery than it would be for Allegheny or Somerset County. Because the, the labor market's so much different between those two. And that's the problem with Kerwin altogether, it's a one-size-fits-all mill. And you can't do that in the state of Maryland. It's gonna fail right off the bat because one-size-fits-all doesn't, very seldom ever works here.
Their budgets, Anarundale County's got 1.5 billion for education. I mean, that, 3 billion for education. Right, yeah. I mean, our county budget's 180. I mean, like, the whole county, like, that's, that's a lot more money you can do. I mean, it's like comparing like, the mom and pop pizza shop to, you know, Domino's. Like, if you're bigger, you got a lot more buying power.
I would just, I would highlight the things that we're doing well with Kerwin. That's what I would, that's what I'll continue doing. Like, I would say, listen, we're, we don't, we're not, we're not discounting it, but we're not casting it aside. We're trying. We're trying our very best. And at the end of the day, there are certain things that we're gonna come up short on. We're just letting you know. And then the salary's gotta be, I mean, it's one of them. You guys are in a much better position than most people are when it comes to those salaries.
And I'm not saying we aren't, but I'm saying, but you know what? We may be the last to fall off the boat, but we're gonna fall off the boat. It's, it's gonna happen.
We got out ahead of it and.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we thought we were doing the right thing.
And that's why you guys are positioned, because you guys, your maintenance of effort was always much better than the other counties.
Correct.
Historically, that's, that's, you guys were positioned in a better place to begin with because of that, so.
Absolutely. So one more, for a one-size-fits-all, solar.
Yes, thank you.
So my suggestion, and I've read the Mako draft bill, and I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity to take a look at it. The one thing I see glaring in there, and again, it's, it's not bad, but it's definitely preemption is there. I mean, it's 100% there.
Why are they punting on that? I don't understand.
Well, my, my suggestion is, and, and what doesn't, the bill doesn't take into account is counties, again, like Queen Anne's, you know, looking ahead. So back in 17, 16, whatever it was, we established our solar zone that no other county in the state had at the time, right? We're not getting credit for any of that. And, and what I mean by that is, we've designated 2,500 acres of solar, right? Along the transmission line, so it makes it fiscally better for whoever's gonna come develop land, right? Because they're right there, they don't have to go miles and miles to get it to the transmission lines. We should get credit for that. So within the bill, it should look at, okay, any county that has a plan in place, we shouldn't be able to preempt their plan in any way, shape, or form, whether it's zoning, whether it's number of acres, until such time as the goal is either met or not met, right? Because there's, there are no goals, that's the problem, right? You have a, you have a, you have something out there that says, we wanna get to this by 2030 or 2035, but it doesn't say, okay, Montgomery County, you need to have X number of megawatts production. Queen Anne's, you have to have X number of megawatts production. There's, there's, this is like the WIP program. This is WIP 2.0. It's like, hey, we're gonna do great things, but we're not sure what it's gonna look like when we're done with it. So my whole thing is, take a look at what Queen Anne's has done and, and look at it and say, oh, wow, they've done a lot, you know? They've designated the acreage, they've put out a pilot program, they're using the money they're taking in on the pilot for preservation. You know, that's a viable plan that we put forward and spent a lot of time doing.
And should get credit for it.
And should, but we're getting nothing. Basically, this bill, this bill or any bill following this is just gonna say, Queen Anne's, you did a great job, but guess what? You're gonna do what everybody else in the state's gonna do. And, and that's why I say, you know, that one-size-fits-all does not work. I know Caroline's been proactive, and I know they're up in arms about it. And, and there's gonna be more counties falling in line when they realize, wow, we have no control over this?
Most people don't realize now how many leases have already been signed by landowners and these wealthy solar developers. How much, how many purchases have already been made by these folks? I know of one case, at least in Talbot County, where Talbot County, they, they have a restriction with solar in critical areas. And that makes sense, right? I mean, these are toxic chemicals that you're gonna have in a critical area, you know? And so to one landowner, they were approached by a solar company to, to purchase their, their farm. And they were like, well, you realize that most of my farm is in the critical area. They're like, I don't care. The Public Service Commission is actually gonna be the ones that makes the decision. And the DNR's gonna make the decisions on location, and the counties have absolutely no control over anything to do with solar anymore. And that, these developers know it, and they have deep pockets. And the challenge that we have and the challenge that we face is that they're offering these landowners, you know, three or four or five times what they're getting on these ag leases. And in some cases, they wanna retire. You know what? They, they can retire, you know, with some of the, these offers that these people are making. That's what we're up against.
Well, like I said, I know we're, we have a losing battle. I get that, because you guys are getting.
Well, no, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna go down with it.
Well, no, 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 I get it. But I was just saying, I mean, I, to me, sitting here from Queen Anne's County, I'd just like to see the bill that, that's out there. And I know you guys haven't even, haven't even brought it before the floor yet, so it's not even there. But just to some, somewhere where you, the counties that have been proactive should get credit for being proactive.
The bill that Del was citing last year, and again, Mako had a panel with Chairman Wilson that was on and talked about specifically, you know, requiring, you know, the counties are gonna have to absorb this project. But the other part of his bill that he didn't talk about until he was pressed on it was also that looked at each county and said, well, what are you doing towards the cause? You know, are you picking up your fair share of that? And that's unfortunately the reason why the bill struggled a little bit. But I think that's an important part, and the fact that it was introduced by the chairman of the committee that deals with this is important and something that we can latch on a little bit and say the same type of thing. You know, these policies weren't voted on by us, okay? You know, we, we, I think collectively we can agree that we need generation in the state, but solar is not a base generation. Solar's not gonna fix the problems that we're gonna have in the next few years because we're shutting down coal-fired, you know, energy facilities in Anarundale County without any type of backup to, to supplant that. But we are getting the brunt of it because we have relatively inexpensive, vast pieces of land that solar developers can target. At the end of the day, I think that they're finally, finally recognizing that these other counties have to pick up some of the fair share on this as well, that they have to be able to do that. And for you guys to not be able to do what you've done, you know, with, with zoning areas, we were just in Cecil County and, and talked to Council, Councilman Miller about, you know, the, the types of soil that are up there and saying the classical soil that they're not.
Type A soil.
You don't want solar.
Right, don't want, don't want type A. And he was able to do that and make that clarification. So that should mean something. You're exactly right. Right now in Frederick County, with the whole issues about data centers that were going on out there, well, the county executive put together a group and said, hey, you know, advise me on what we should do with data centers. One of the first concerns, one of the big issues, that we wanna zone for. You know, we wanna zone. So if you can zone for data centers.
Data center, right.
You know, why, why are we not able to do that? Again, I know the, the law about, you know, these being energy generation and.
Solar on top of the debt.
Well, keep in mind, these things, this law was, was designed when solar wasn't even a, a thought, you know, with the PSC being able to dictate where they were going. This was about nuclear power plants and coal-fired power plants and, and them being able to say, hey, we need generation in this area of the state, and we're not gonna let counties to dictate whether or not this can take place or not. And then all of a sudden, solar became generation, and they rolled that in and said, oh, yeah, that's, that's what this refers to as well, too. So it's, it's, it's kinda been, obviously been an issue with everybody. So, you know, I think we've always been, like I said, I know we've always been fighting the issue. We wanna make sure that counties have the capability to do it. We wanna make sure that, you know, farmers have the ability to use their property what it, to be what it's zoned for. You know, just because they come as well, too, and said, hey, I'm getting offered this amount of money for an acre of land for solar, let me do it. Well, you know, if a shopping center developer came in and offered you a lot of money.
That's always mine.
You couldn't do that either. You know, so you don't get to just do it because somebody's made that offer. So we wanna be able to allow the process of zoning to take place if you guys make the decisions on where you want this to go.
PJM has 30 sites designated in Maryland for generation, 30 of them. 20 of them are on the eastern shore. And this is for solar. The PJM, by their own admission, will tell you that, you know what? We can't depend on wind or solar. That's not our base energy. And what they're looking for, for base energy right now is they're looking at gas-powered plants. But yet they have 25 of them on their list to be decommissioned. You look at Brandon Shores, you sit down and try and draw that line in here, you talk about infrastructure, bring a line in. Maryland, if you ever look at the map, we have very few big main power trunks in our state, nothing on the eastern shore at this point.
What's that?
They're coming.
Yeah, they're coming. But again, there are certain deficiencies. But you go to Montgomery County, and in Montgomery County, they actually charge every, every user of electricity an additional charge or clean energy. They wanna go out and develop it, but he has, he's yet to do anything. And he was confronted with that in our committee, and he said, where, what are you doing with that money? And you know, he said, we find other uses for it. But it was earmarked for, you know, I'm paying for a fund so we could get solar in our, our county to offset some of this, and that's it. So, and PJM will tell you right now that they cannot possibly, they will not be able to supply us the 100% clean energy that we're looking for by 2035. Where are we gonna get it?
To comment on, on what you're, we're not, we're definitely not defeated on this one, because there's two issues about this that, these are, this, this is an issue that's worth dying on the sword over. Because I, honestly, I think that, one transportation, I talked about that earlier, and I think this is an existential threat to our, our eastern shore economy. It absolutely is. Because the number one industry in Maryland, whether these guys won't admit it or not, is agriculture. And it's getting close to the number two. I think healthcare's second. And most of these folks don't understand that our agriculture in Maryland is so integrated with poultry industry. They don't understand it, there's that three-legged stool. If you're missing any of those legs, it's gonna crumble and it's gonna go away. And then, then we're left without our number one industry. So they're gonna be affected by this. Their food supply's gonna be affected by this. I mean, they don't really truly understand that if we take out hundreds of thousands of acres of grain production, and I'm not talking about vegetables, we can grow those almost anywhere, but grain production, then I don't know what the tipping point is. I'm gonna, we're gonna try to get answers from the poultry industry. Because right now, they're, they're, they're bringing in grain by rail car, mainly corn.
There's not enough.
There's not enough corn.
You should sure to feed.
The poultry industry, that's correct. So right now, they're importing corn, because there's not enough corn being produced on the eastern shore. But you take out a couple hundred acre, 100,000 acres, and about half of our, our grain production is corn, then at some point, it's gonna be cost prohibitive for them to continue to bring in grain via rail car from out west. At some point, it's gonna be more cost-effective for them to just move their operation to where the, right, corn's being grown.
Where it is.
Exactly. And so we need to get the industry to say that. Right now, I don't know that they're prepared to say it, because I'm not sure if they're even completely agreeing in which direction they wanna move in, mainly because of property rights issues. So they need to get their act together.
In your estimation, how many thousands of acres are gonna force on us? Caroline, Kent, Queen Anne's?
Well, they did some mapping in Caroline. There's about 200,000 acres in Caroline County. I knew, I, the only reason why I mentioned Caroline, is I know about Caroline, because they, they've been doing their homework already. And just looking at the maps, more than three quarters of it will qualify for solar panels. And basically, the county can't, they can't. Well, no, the, the, yeah, the county has no say. And then, and then the second issue, just so I, I don't lose my train of thought. So that's the first issue. We're gonna basically threaten our number one industry in Maryland, not just the eastern shore. But the second issue is preemption. I mean, they did it to you guys, this is the third time in the last, what, 15 years? The states come down, whether it's cannabis, they basically can't say, and I saw it on your list, they, they're telling you where you can zone these things, the setbacks. They're telling you all these, like, that's your decision, that's the town's decision, not the state's. They're imposing that on you, that's preemption. Well, we have to talk about that offline. I think we, there's a lot of conversations that are going on that I'm not prepared to publicly talk about just yet. I don't think we're there yet, but there are some, there are some things that we can talk about.
Bruce? Just briefly, I'm, I'm not trying to rehash, I'm very glad to see this brought up. I mean, I have the privilege of representing several eastern shore counties. I'm very, very troubled, and I'm sure the senator knows more than I about this, but I think there's gonna be a tremendous effort to really usurp the traditional county powers that, that you operate on. Not every county of the 24 that we have really can do solar. So you, you really look at the eastern shore, maybe sort of the middle of western Maryland, and, you know, you, you get, you get into this, and I think it's gonna be a big, a big battle that's gonna be in a broader sense of, you know, we have counties, the constitution has set us up, we have a unique this. I think the discussion about the poultry industry, and I'm happy to do whatever you want, I think we gotta bring them in and show the economic impacts and the viability of the eastern shore in terms of, of this land being gobbled up and everything like that. And then finally, and I say this with utmost respect, particularly Commissioner Wilson, you know, the couple of years I've been working more closely with Mako, representing several counties, Mako's gotta get tough. And I, I, I really say this very politely, you don't just come in, no, no, I mean it, you don't come in and amend everything, because then the, the nose is under the tent. You can kill bills if, if you really get to resolve it, if you're, you really race-hack in a very professional way and say, the magnificence of our state is our counties. We are American miniature. And, and you're just destroying all this in, in a, you know, in a very sense, and no one's talking about that and looking at it. And I personally, as, as a lobbyist, I get frustrated that, and I'm, I love Mako, I really do. I've, I've known him for many years, but they're just not killing bills anymore. I mean, you've gotta stand up and say, hey, you gotta give respect to the counties. And, and it's in all these areas, education, it's just, and I'm not just trying to say because, you know, to talk favorably, I think it's a real thing. And I, I, you know, and fortunately, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to blow smoke or anything like that. Your state senator, your state senator is the energy expert in the state of Maryland in the legislature. Everyone knows it. They, they know it, he really knows his stuff. And so we have that benefit of really talking, uh, uh, real stuff, the, the realities, in a respectful, professional way. And, I mean, I'll, I'll work it, I'll work it to the bone for you all. I mean, I'm honored to represent Carroll County, Carroll, Caroline County, and it's bad, and it's, and I'm, I'm, the counties are the strength of Maryland, I really do. And just quickly while I have the floor, it just takes two seconds, the delegate from Carroll County's gonna put in that constitutional amendment again, it's going nowhere, don't lose any sleep, okay? He also announced he's not running for reelection. He's gonna put it in, so the constitutional amendment will be in. Just relax and focus on it.
Forgot his name already, that's however long he is. No, but I was gonna say, though, with Mako, and I, and I don't get it, like, I, I've been, you know, I remember when, when highway user was taken, and Mako conceded on that 15 years ago, 16 years ago. And they made a deal with the governor at that time. And part of the deal, part of the deal was, they were gonna give that back. They never gave it back, we knew they weren't gonna give that bounty back. And honestly, when I was a commissioner in Caroline, we were like, really close to just backing out of it. It was only $15,000 a year for the county to get the Mako. We were like, what, what, what good are they serving us? When we're talking about preemption, we're talking about local control. Out of any issue that we ever deal with in Annapolis, that is one issue that MML and Mako should never concede on. They should never make concessions on local control. They should have, they should be digging their heels in and fight, fight, fight every single time on local control. And they, over and over and over again, they keep giving, I mean, and I love those guys, like, Michael Sanders and Kevin, we're all friends, I do, I hang out with these guys. And I think, and, and the thing is, I think when you're there long enough, you, you, you're sitting in front of C.T. Wilson, and he could be, you know, and these guys, and the Senate President, and the Speaker of the House, and their staff and all that, they, at some point, you get tired of making them mad, you know what I mean? And they, I guess sometimes they're either afraid to make them mad, but there's certain issues they gotta understand that you're not budging on.
Well, solar, solar was decided in, in case law. So solar and preemption is a little tough to fight right now. I mean, Marshall County lost that lawsuit.
We passed a bill three years ago.
That was the camel nose under the channel, solar. When they lost that lawsuit, that's when the, the dominoes started falling, honestly. And then that's when big solar said, hey, look at this, Maryland's ripe for the picking.
They caved on Plant Maryland, they caved on tier mapping, they caved on cannabis, they caved on highway user. I mean, they caved on all these important issues. Like, I don't understand, like, and I can understand compromise, we compromise all the time. We do, seriously. And how many times, like, they know, like, even, we, we've earned a lot of respect in the legislature, because we don't stand up on the floor very often and fight, you know what I mean? But when we do, they know it's coming. They know it's coming, and they, and they respect us for that, you know? And Mako and MML should do the same thing. They gotta know which issues are the most important. You should never give up local control, because what's, what the heck's the point in you guys sitting here every week? What the heck's the point in your volunteer boards, the planning commissions, your liquor boards? What's the point in them volunteering their time every single month to come to a meeting when the state's gonna assert their authority? You know? I don't see, what's the point in having you here?
Well, I think we have the delegates and senators that vote for a lot of this stuff. And I know we don't have four of them here, but there's.
And also, and also.
And when you're on Mako, go to your, your fellow Mako-ans, if you will, and talk to them, because look at the relationship you have with us. They should be having the same relationship with their delegation.
And not, not all do, I can tell you that.
Well, they don't because, you know, we saw what happened to highway users. The delegation from our district didn't vote to get rid of those. But this is what's happening, the communication needs to be there. We need the support in Annapolis when we find these egregious bills. You guys got to step it up and say, you know what, we're coming over there en masse. You know, you get five commissioners from a county, it matters, it means something. But if you're not talking to your delegation, I'm not saying you aren't because you guys do. But that's where you got to start pushing it and say, you know, there's, we're the ones making them decisions for you for some reason. And, and we're not communicating. You don't, it's not your will, it's most of these counties don't want to give up. I mean, every, every commissioner, every county council or whatever, they don't want to give up power.
You guys know this too, that, like, our representation is proportional to population across the state. You guys, one county, one vote. Like, honestly, the most powerful, the most powerful votes in Mako is Kent County. Because they represent 19,000 people. They only have one person representing Montgomery and Prince George, that's over a million people, you know what I mean? They're not, like, and that's the reason why we created the Rural County Coalition, what, 10, 15, 20 year, or 12 years ago, something like that. I don't know how effective that is. But honestly, the rural members, you guys, I mean, leverage your, leverage your numbers. Honestly, they're at a, they're at a disadvantage. They being Montgomery and Antirundale and Baltimore City, they're at a disadvantage on, in Mako. Now, MML's a different story, majority of those people don't agree with us.
Yeah, but, but to the delegates' point, if the delegates go down there and Mako comes in and goes against it, and like you said, one vote, but unfortunately, that's not the reality when it comes to the floor and it's voted on. You know what I mean?
You mean at all your meetings?
Well, no, when it actually gets voted on, the reality is that's not the vote. If, if the senate was like, the Maryland constitution was originally drawn, one senator, one county, you would have balance in Annapolis because you would have the equivalent of what Mako's voting block is right now. You don't have that, you have it by population, much like we do in the country, which is no good either. But, uh, and so, we've eroded the ability for local control to really be true local control, which was what it was supposed to be, right? All, all local decisions were supposed to remain local. The state was supposed to make more broad state decisions on state highways and things of that nature. And then, of course, the feds were supposed to do the rest, right? I mean, it's, the problem is it's eroded from the feds down to the state, and now it eats at the counties. And you know it and I know it, that's, that's the reality we live in with this. And when you have a majority party that's basically going to do what they want with a veto-proof majority, how do you stop it? You, you tell me how that stops and how one group or one person's going to stop it.
Well, they should not support a bill with amendments that bears something of that consequence, they should oppose the bill.
And I'll disagree.
And not support it with amendments until preemption's taken out. Because that, that's a big enough issue where they should never, ever support with amendments.
And I don't think that bill is going, that's why I brought it up to you guys today, to let you know that there's obviously, there is going to be a fight on it, I'm sure, that's going to linger on, so.
And to go back to solar, I do want to talk to you guys. We do need the eastern shore very cohesive on this issue because I think that at some point, much like Kerwin, you're going to do what you can do, and if you can't do it, you're not going to be able to do it. And honestly, protecting our land and protecting our number one industry has to be, that's another issue we got to dial this order home. I do, I believe it.
In 10 years, it'll be obsolete. There'll be technology that replaces all of these thousands of acres that they're putting out.
Also, they'll come with all these solar projects that come battery storage.
So listen, we, we know you guys got to get up to Kent County, so we appreciate you taking the time to visit with us. And we know you're fighting the good fight in Annapolis and, and hats off and kudos to you guys for going in there and continuing to have the passion to represent your, your district, knowing that it's an uphill battle every time. So, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
For you guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Fire isn't around anymore.
Unfortunately, that's capitalism.
Did we cover it?
That's capitalism. Did, that you had to disclose it. And we all supported it in Mass. Mako did support that one and it didn't pass.
Personal property tax and speed limit.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
There's two initiatives we need to take.
You may hear about solar in Kansas, by the way.
You got to be in Kent County in 35 minutes.
Chances are.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The draft, uh, Mako bill? Yeah, okay.
We're going to bring this meeting back to order. Been a busy couple hours.
What were you just saying about Commissioner Moran? Oh, oh, sorry, wrong camera now.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QACTV-7. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at qac.org/live or on our public access governmental television channel provided by Breeze Line Cable Services. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to qac.org-publiccomment. And citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@qac.org. All comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on tonight's agenda. We acknowledge everyone's participation and by attending, you acknowledge this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign up at the information table in the lobby. Comments longer than three minutes may be submitted in writing for the commissioner's review. We will now stand to be led in the pledge of allegiance by Commission Vice President Phil Duminell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can just stand for just a quick minute, uh, and say some, uh, prayers for the folks that are in Carolinas and Tennessee that are suffering and the folks that are looking at another hurricane down in Florida. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, brings us to the approval of our agenda for this evening. So, our agenda for tonight, October the 8th, along with the regular session minutes and the closed session minutes have been circulated, excuse me, from, from our last meeting from September 24th, have been circulated for review. Do we have any additions and/or corrections?
Motion to accept the agenda and minutes as submitted.
Second? We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Above.
All right. All right, thank you, commissioners. Uh, that brings us to press and public comment.
June Clark?
Good evening, county commissioners. My name is June Clark and I lived at 425 Spiderweb Road in Centerville. And I'm inviting you to attend our ALS walk on October the 20th. This is their third year of their walk. The first year, we did it on our own. The second two years, we finally had our own chapter, which is the Justice Big Day chapter. So I'm urging you all to try to come out that morning. We started 10 o'clock registering, and then 11 o'clock is our walk. We have a one-mile walk or a two-mile walk, whichever you prefer. We have raffles, we'd be selling chances on Kyle Hamilton's jersey, signed jersey. So we're very pleased with that. And we really thank you, county commissioners, for letting us use the 18th park. I'm going to leave these flyers with you and hope you can attend.
Thank you, thank you very much. That's all that signed up, Bruce, is there anybody else? Okay.
All right, this email comes from Douglas Gray. On the issue of the Texas Amendment County Ordinance 24-13 to define indoor shooting range and add indoor shooting range as a permitted use in Queen Anne's County, I would like to recommend additional districts to the amendment. Considering current permitted uses and similarities to the zoning districts already included in the amendment, I would recommend adding agricultural district, suburban commercial district, village center district, and town center district to the proposed amendment. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak? Okay, we'll close press and public comment.
All right, commissioners, thank you. We can move into presentations and we have the one and only Dr. Joe Sietola, our health officer, for his health department update. Dr. C, welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening.
Well, I know that, uh, I know that the rumor has gotten around that Dr. Sietola is retiring.
You're here to tell us that's not true.
Well.
We, we voted on it and you're not allowed to.
Well, gentlemen.
It was unanimous. Your retirement has been rejected.
I understand why. But I won't fade away like some people do. I plan to stay around and stay active. But, uh, the health department for this last quarter, last half, have been busy. We had issues that we deal with MDE about sewer and septic repairs. And with significant assistance from our legislative representative, we were able to address this in an appropriate way. And we are working closely, the environmental division in the health department is working very closely. And John Nickerson is doing a superb job to manage and deal with a very difficult situation where we have a system that essentially has been used for 25 years, Sandline Trench, for failed septic systems that do not have appropriate land or space to put in a replacement drain field. He's used this for 25 years in Queen Anne County and there has never been a single incidence of groundwater contamination with this system. It is the same sand essentially that is used in the VAT systems with the mounds. So, we are working through it diligently with MDE on a regular basis. We were one of the five jurisdictions that MDE decided to do an audit on. And we're waiting to see when the other jurisdictions in the state are going to have their audits because there's a lot of issues as to interpretation, not necessarily regulation, but more interpretation of how things should be done or could be done. So, that is an ongoing process. Other activities in the health department? We participated in Queen Anne County Goes Purple. And it is a continual battle to deal with opioids. And I wish that we would have a little stronger enforcement in our federal government in trying to slow down and stop the transmission of fentanyl across our southern border. When you look at the amount of fentanyl, and I heard a report today, that the amount of fentanyl coming across the county or the state lines and the, the country lines is, and there's enough deaths occurring from the fentanyl that would be consistent with a 747 fully loaded passenger plane crashing to the ground on a daily basis is what we're facing nationally from the opioid pandemic that is not being addressed. We would do something, if this was happening in an airline situation, we would call it a halt and at least reevaluate. And that's what I'm asking. Please, step back as representatives in the federal government to do something to stop. Please step back as representatives in the federal government to do something to stop the inflow of fentanyl into our counties, into our country, period. Cancer, breast cancer, it's breast cancer awareness. And fortunately, the Health Department is able to provide mammograms, MRIs, and ultrasounds with our medical community for those individuals in our community that are concerned with breast cancer or for routine screening. Thankfully, with the state health insurance plan, which is coming up for renewal starting probably with Medicare in the 15th of October, we are able to have the majority of our population have health insurance and has access to appropriate evaluation and follow-up and treatment for their health needs.
How did, information to qualify for, for the, for...
We put on our social media about the signup time and enrollment for both the Maryland Health Plan as well as Medicare and Medicaid.
Okay.
Those enrollments are starting in October after the 15th.
Okay.
So. MIC, our Mobile Integrated Community Health Program, is active, doing very well. Matter of fact, we have been asked to help Cecil County get their MIC program going. Also been helping with Caroline County, getting a mobile integrated program with Caroline. Working closely with University of Maryland Shore Regional Hospital System to address the needs in Kent County as well as Dorchester. And that I'm very pleased to see that that program is moving consistently statewide, is addressing the true nature of healthcare equality and equity in that these patients that are patients that essentially have fallen through the health delivery system crack or so, we're able to address their housing, social needs, as well as their medical needs and their medication is essentially one of the key pieces with their FMD from Shore Health that really does do a superb job in making sure these patients are getting the right medicines at the right time for the right disease. So. What else? Well, I'm working on a new program that I hope I can get started before I do retire on the 31st of December as health officer. But it's basically a transitional care. One of our community nurses has successfully completed her nurse practitioner program. She is now licensed as an independent nurse practitioner in community health, family medicine. And the plan is to essentially center up in the Nielsen Building as a resource for people who are discharged either from the hospital or the emergency room and can't get in either primary care or about two or three months with the paucity of appointments. And they're busy. We all know it. Trying to get an appointment with your physician is difficult. Well, with the NP doing transitional care, follow-up post-discharge, you can contact the pharmacy and have our FMD go over the medications that the patient currently has in the home, link that NP work with the MIC program for a home visit, and communicate all of those activities and the condition of that patient back to their primary care. So this is a transitional care from hospital event to back to your normal daily routine, but also incorporating your recognized either internist, family medicine physician to follow up and take care of the patient. This is a unique, this is a unique process, and we're, we're trying it. It's a trial period. It's supported essentially by the Health Department and our core funding, and I'm very encouraged to see how this will progress over a period of time. So. I would like to say, I really appreciated the 12 years of support, acceptance, letting me be the cowboy that I am and to try what we need to try and not be afraid to try doing unique collaborative, integrated approaches to not only public safety but to health, public health. And the three years of COVID, we did it because we worked as a team across the board. We did things in Queen Anne County and things in the mid-shore that nobody else was doing. And I really appreciate the help, the support, and the guidance from all of you. Thank you.
I can't, I, I just, I can remember when you would come in and, you know, monthly and, and report where we were and how things were going and, and, and I can't even imagine this county having to go through what we went through without you at the helm at the Health Department. So really, the thank you goes to you.
No, the thank you goes to all of us because it was a team. There, yeah, there may have been individual spotlights occasionally, but no, we were a team, and we're still a team. And I plan to stay around. I will continue to be the EMS jurisdictional medical director for DES. And depending on what happens with the position of health officer, I will be around to keep an eye on the Health Department and maybe even occasionally show up. So. Gentlemen, I live here, I'm a citizen here, and I'm devoted to this county. I'm not going anywhere.
Thank you very much, Dr. C.
I will take any questions.
The IV update, you didn't give the IV update.
Baxter.
Baxter, yes.
Okay. I had a conversation yesterday with State Health Department. They had a Zoom meeting on the situation with Baxter. Baxter, unfortunately, was in northern portion of North Carolina in the mountainous area. Their main IV lab, IV bag solution, we don't know the extent of the damage, but considering the fact that there's no electricity out there and that there is significant disruption of road transportation, we don't even know what their facility was actually, how much damage. But the problem is, there's a very, very short situation now with IV fluids. And that would be not only just normal saline and essentially anything that we would need to administer medication through an IV.
So antibiotics?
Yeah. And what we've done right now, and the state has done, and I came off a state medical director's call with MIMS this afternoon, just before the meetings here. What we have done, and I notified our team here in Queen Anne, DES, that the only time that we're really gonna, when we start an IV, unless there's a need for volume fluids or medication delivery, we will not be running IVs through our normal event. We will put a HEPLock in, the IV will be started. It has access available to the paramedic or the medical team at the ER if need be. Apparently, Luminous Health had to cancel some elective surgery on Monday because of a very, very short supply of saline and IV fluids. I have a feeling that this is going to get precipitously worse over the near future. It's going to have to be dealt with on a federal level. The governor has been notified, our, our federal representatives have been notified. This will come down to a question of Food and Drug Administration being able to not only have foreign producers of IV fluids allowed to come in to the U.S. The also, the other possibility is to talk to compounding pharmacies because compounding pharmacies do make their own solutions. And the plan is to have a discussion with some of the local compounding pharmacies and see what we can do locally. But right now, we have enough supply that we're being very judicious in its use and that we, I will keep you informed, not only from a Health Department standpoint, but also a DES standpoint.
The stat I heard this morning was that they produce 1.5 million bags a day.
60% of the whole United States is done in that one plant.
But we have too many facilities that are responsible for large production that the U.S. relies on. We had this with the baby formula a while back. We have this with, with meat products. It's just too much consolidation in one location. Something goes wrong and the whole supply chain gets thrown off.
Or we don't produce it at all in our country.
Well, they do. No, Baxter has 13 facilities nationwide, but I think nine of them are, are in the U.S. So the majority's here, but it's just that one produces the majority.
That's the one that does the majority of the IV.
That's right.
So.
It's, I mean, who knows what this, this latest hurricane's going to do in Florida? What kind of disruption? It's, it's mother nature.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
So, before you leave.
You're not leaving.
Before you leave that chair, we need you to complete this mental health hospital for our youth in Kent County. So you can't go anywhere. I know you said you weren't. So please stay, please stay.
I am...
You have to guide us to get this done.
You know one thing about me. I'm very vocal. I'm not afraid to say what needs to be said or do it. Okay? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doc.
Good evening.
Have a good night.
All right, thank you, Doc.
Okay, commissioners, we are a little ahead of schedule for our public hearing, so should we go to the Public Works?
Yeah.
All right. We can go to the Department of Public Works. So if you want to turn to tab number two in your books, we have two items from Mr. Edgar here for administration and engineering. So if you want to turn to tab, again, tab number two, item one, pages one and two, is the Kramer Center Renovations Contract Award. So Lee, you want to give us a quick rundown on that?
Certainly. Motion first or...
We can do, you can do a motion first if you want.
So commissioners, as you may or may not be aware, over the last year or so, we've been performing some renovations to the Kramer Center, which many of those spaces haven't been really refreshed in well over 30 years. We've done it in phases, allowing us to move the departments around the building, and this has been done largely in-house with our facility technicians, our general services staff. Paul Kirst has been coordinating that, and Kathy and her team have been very accommodating. We are entering the fifth and final phase, which will be renovations to the main meeting room area, which again is in need of some cosmetic repair and attention. And what this project involves is the removal of the skylight, which is leaking and problematic and is well past its service life. We've opted to cover it up, roof it over, to provide for better weather tightness, reduce glare in the meeting room. With that, updated electric and such, looking at new flooring, walls, and those kinds of updates in the room, which is utilized not only by the staff in that building but as a meeting room for other county agencies and such. We've put this out to bid. We've received six responsive bids for this project. The low bidder is Carmel FJ Company, doing business as KBC out of Fairfax, Virginia. As you will note, we'd actually opened bids a few weeks ago, and the reason why we're here a little bit later is owing to not having worked with this vendor before, as well as this contractor being at a distance, as well as, I know it's the spread of some of the prices there around the 260 range. We came in very low here at 170,000 approximately. So we took some time having conversations with them, making sure that they fully understood and were committed to the scope of work, to which they've responded in the affirmative and provide us with many more references than we originally required, examples of where they've done retrofits for other restaurants and businesses and this type of work. So we're satisfied that they are qualified to do the work. We've been very fortunate to receive a, a very competitive price, and with your concurrence, would like to award the job and proceed to this fifth and final phase.
In motion.
I move to award the Kramer Center renovations contract to Carmel FJ Company DBA, KBC at Fairfax, Virginia, in the amount of $168,450 and authorize Director of Public Works to issue the notice of award and execute the contract on behalf of the county commissioners.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions regarding? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one absent. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Lee. All right. Moving on, commissioners, item number two on pages three through 29 is a lease agreement with the Kent Island Community Garden, Inc., or 210 White Pine Lane. That's from Mr. Quimby, and we've been working on this for a bit of time. So this is a relocation of their community garden to the county property down there next to the elementary school, Bayside.
I move to execute the lease agreement with the Kent Island Community Garden Incorporated to allow the use of a portion of the county lands located at 210 White Pine Lane for the relocation and continued existence of the community garden currently residing in the Harborview community.
I'll second that, but can I amend it? How do I do that?
You have to make a motion to amend.
I want to make a motion to amend.
Motion to amend to, to, everything you just said but to add $1,500 as a fee for them to allow them to get started with the gardening.
What amount?
1,500.
1,500?
As a grant.
Grant.
Not a fee. Gotcha. I thought, I thought you wanted to pay 1,500.
No, but you can.
A grant, grant.
You can...
I'll second the amendment.
Second the amendment, okay.
So we have a motion?
We got to vote on the amendment first.
Okay. So we got to vote on the amendment first. All in favor of a $1,500 grant?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, so moved? Now we're going to vote on the original motion.
As amended.
As amended.
There we go.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Why are they going to be tricky like that to you?
I don't know.
Thank God for you, Jack.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Well done. Oh, is this gentleman here from the...
Yeah.
He, yeah, he made the trip. He made the trip.
You introduce yourself.
Just in case we had some questions, so.
I want to thank you very much for approving this. It's going to be a great resource for the county because you got two elementary schools and a middle school right there, and they're going from county land to county land. They can use it as an education resource.
Oh, good. Well, thank you for your commitment and to extend to the rest of the folks that helped in this garden, our appreciation.
And how can folks get in touch with you if they would like to garden, to...
Yeah, we're going to need all the help we can get because it's a big move.
So how does, how does anybody who's watching the commissioners' meeting this evening find out more about the program to volunteer?
Yeah, we're going to have to start advertising it to get more people involved. Previously, when the first garden was built, we had the Boy Scouts work on it. There's also, I believe, one of the high schools here has a carpentry, you know, discipline. Maybe get them involved in helping us build and stuff like that and try to get more partners to get more people.
Who does, who, who would somebody reach out to? Who would, you. Okay, so your name and your contact information.
It's John McKnight.
Okay.
And they can reach me at, you know, are you on my phone number or...
That's fine, whatever information you want to share.
And my email is mcknightjohn143@gmail.com.
Perfect.
So whatever we can get, more support I can get, better.
Perfect.
Look forward to those grapes.
Thank you very much, sir.
This is Alan.
Yes.
Right here.
There you go. Thank you. I was actually in the hospital when, when they came out to their original gardens there, so I appreciate that.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
All right. Very good. Okay, commissioners, the next two items for Public Works actually are for the Sanitary Commission, so if you want to convene as the Sanitary Commission, please.
Motion to convene the Sanitary.
Go.
All right, thank you. And item number three... And item number three is the Chesapeake Bay Education Center SEBEC Sewer Extension Bid on page thirty. So Mr. Quimby, you want to outline that? We, this is actually a rejection of the one single bid we received on this project, so.
Yeah, we have been trying to connect SEBEC to the county sewer for now for, well, probably over a year. The challenge is, as you know, if you've visited, you've got a 3,000-foot lane that goes right through tidal wetlands. And we were trying to avoid a tidal wetland permit and also a non-tidal wetland permit, both. And the only way to do that would be to drill 3,000 foot in a single shot. But on the other hand, we can only use an inch and a half diameter pipe in order to maintain your scour velocity, and you just can't pull that small pipe that far. So what they did actually was probably going at four-inch pipes of height of 3,000 feet, and then they would just use that as a conduit for the inch and a half, which just blew the budget lately. So we're going to go back to the drawing board and see, the road allegedly is built corduroy construction, which if you don't know what that means, that's meaning that they would take a log and lay it beside a log, and lay it beside a log, until finally the log stops sinking in the mud, and then they would put gravel on top of it. So our first hope is that there's enough gravel on top of the logs that we can just do it in the lane, but I don't think there is. But we're going to do tests to find that out. The second fallback would be to plow it in alongside the lane, which would definitely need permits. So, but this, the bid was just, that's crazy money, so.
Okay.
They don't suggest you chase it.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to reject the bid for Chesapeake Bay Education Center Sewer Extension and direct the Department of Public Works to redesign the project to attempt to meet the approved budget amount.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Alan? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Two absent.
I have to question rejection.
Question, question rejection, not in high school, but I don't need to do it.
Okay. So we'll continue on with the new.
Yeah, what he said. Please. What he said.
All right, Commissioners, item number three for Public Works.
This is what happens when you start at three o'clock.
Yeah, that's right. Item number four, excuse me, for Public Works is the Ski Phase Four Resolution 24-07 for the intention to incur debt, and this is for the next phase of the project, so. Alan, you want to?
Yes, we're well into Phase Four. We're not really well into money point of view. We've been designing it for a couple of years, and we got our third invoice for the pipes in the ground. But at some point in time, you have to do this formality to adopt this resolution so that these monies that we're spending now are eligible to be reimbursed by state loans, and we just wanted to get it out of the way so we didn't forget.
Gotcha.
I move to adopt Resolution 24-OSA, declaring the official intent to reimburse in order to secure Maryland Department of Environment loan funding to fund the ongoing sewer improvements for Phase Four of the Southern Kent Island sanitary project.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Or moved?
Thank you.
All right, that is.
You gentlemen?
That's all we have for the Department of Public Works. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in this evening. All right, and Commissioners, we are still a little ahead of schedule for our six o'clock hearing, so.
Well, we can introduce that one if you want.
We can.
Introduce that one ordinance.
We can do that if you want to introduce the one bill. Okay.
I'll introduce County Ordinance 2417.
You can get through those action items.
Action items, I think we can get through them.
Yep.
Okay, all right. All right, if you want to minutes, switch over to tab number three, Commissioners, so we can, we have six action items here for consideration this evening.
I move to approve FY26 budget schedule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is basically the schedule that we've been using for years. Jeff and his staff, and Todd does a great job. So without any further ado.
Christmas introductions, so Todd didn't get to speak. You free up the time. Get your free up.
Fine by me. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Sorry, Todd.
That's pretty straightforward.
Great work on this schedule, though.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Yeah, thank you. All right, item two on pages three through twelve is for 201 Love Point Road, Robert L. Bruce Administrative Subdivision, amended perpetual protective agreement deed of shore forest conservation easement. So they're reconfiguring a couple lots here. There's, the next item also relates to the subdivision. As a result, they're relocating and adjusting the critical area open space. No net reduction in the open space or the forest conservation.
I move to execute the amended perpetual protective agreement deed of shore forest conservation easement for the 2101 Love Point Road LLC and Robert L. Bruce Amendment Platte.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, insurance? None. Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, and part two of the Robert L. Bruce Administrative Subdivision, this is an amended deed of open space to capture a septic sewage reserve area and increase the area of one of the lot, Lot Two, for a farm assessment. So that's also relocating some open space, but again, no net reduction in the open space for these subdivisions.
I move to execute the amended deed of open space easement for the 2101 Love Point Road LLC and Robert L. Bruce Amendment Platte.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Item number four on pages twenty-four and twenty-five, this is a request from the Board of Education. This is for FY26 capital funding for the Bayside Elementary School repairs. This is actually a support letter. They want to submit this support letter to the state so they can get state funding for FY26 capital budget for Bayside Elementary School storefront replacement. It was, it wasn't planned in their current capital project plan, but they have identified some serious maintenance issues that need to be addressed next year. So the project is budgeted for 1.8 million, of which we would be responsible for $900,000, half of that. So they're asking for this to be included in next year's capital budget. A little ahead of schedule. We do have funds that would be available to supplant the county share for this.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to execute the support and funding commitment letter to the Interagency Commission on School Construction, which would approve the county share of funding for the Bayside Elementary storefront replacement project for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Item five on pages twenty-six through thirty-three, this is a excess property intent to dispose. This is a Pier One Road right-of-way that actually extends into the Bay Bridge Marina property. There's a map in your books showing it's listed as right-of-way area A. And in order for us to dispose of this property, it consists of about one acre. We have to advertise that for the intent to dispose of that, and then we would recommend issuing a quitclaim deed to the Bay Bridge Marina to transfer that property, which is within their parcel, to them if there's no objections.
I move that the right-of-way located on Pier One Road in Stevensville, consisting of 1.073 acres of land, is no longer needed for public purpose and may be advertised as such where they intend to execute a quitclaim deed to Bay Bridge Marina LLP.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second?
This is land that was created because we moved the road on Pier One a while back. Is that what this one is, or?
Well, it's partly so, but the boundary line for the Bay Bridge Marina extends through this, and this was actually the Pier One Road, piece of Pier One Road that extends into their property, which they've, they've been maintaining this for some time. There was another right-of-way area that was relocated, and we did not want to dedicate, rededicate that piece of that right-of-way because of airport layout.
It just cleans things up.
It's a, yeah, it's kind of cleaning up the title for that old right-of-way, yes.
All right. So we had a motion and we had a second? Any questions? No more? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, and our final action item for this evening is item number six on page thirty-four. This is budget amendment CC21 for the Public Housing, Housing and Community Services, and this establishes budget authority for them to purchase and record vehicles associated with the housing authority as part of the county's acquisition of that agency. It was for a 2023 Ford Transit Van for maintenance and a 2024 Chevy Malibu for the property
I move to approve budget amendment CC21 Housing and Community Services.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. So this is the new housing manager?
The property manager.
The property manager.
They have to go around and to the five different developments and also manage all the scattered site houses, so yeah.
Okay.
Just a vehicle for that individual to utilize, to do her duties.
Okay, utilized for just the responsibilities during the day?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. We had a motion, we had a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Where's the one that?
We didn't have one.
Can we, can we get, since we've taken that over, can we bring the person in who?
Mike Clark?
Yeah.
Yeah, can we have Mike come in and, but bring the person, our property manager?
Sure.
So we can meet the person who's going to be taking care of these properties for us?
Yeah, absolutely.
From a managerial standpoint.
We'll schedule something. I think our next meeting's pretty.
Yeah, that's fine. It doesn't have to be anytime soon, but.
I'm sure Mike would be delighted to have some, come in and do a presentation update and introduce the staff members that he's put in place to. And things are going very well over there at the housing authority.
Yeah, certainly. And we were, I think we were destined to take this back over. Obviously, you know, it was something that, you know, was done back in 2012, 2011, and we were trying to reduce operating costs. And a lot of these changes where we outsource this stuff to save money, we hoped we're going to be sustainable. Some of them have not been, and so we're taking them back, and this is one of those things, so. Good.
All right. That is all the action items, and it is exactly six o'clock.
See how we did that? Perfect time.
Scheduled public hearing for.
That's because I.
You added it. You were a little older in there. I liked that. That was good. You're so silly. Make some time. That's why you're in charge. You're right. This is how it's done.
Be next year.
All right, so we have County Attorney Patrick Thompson officiating the public hearing on County Ordinance 24-15 for the Ethics Ordinance. Patrick Thompson, yep?
On September 10th, 2024, Commissioner Newmanow introduced County Ordinance Number 2415, Bill of Acts concerning provisions to the Greenhills County Ethic Ordinance, Chad Favors and Code of Public Public Law of Greenhills County. For the purpose of revising and updating ethical, ethics ordinance in Greenhills County, Chad Favors and Code of Public Public Law, the deal of general ethics in Greenhills County, by repealing the re-adopting and cooperating the Code of Public Public Law. This area has been held due December 8th, 2024, a 6:00 PM county commission meeting room, Liberty Building, 17 North Liberty Street, 71 Maryland. County ordinance has been available to county commission office, planning zoning and or online, county website, speaker was limited, but prevent each written text under any length can be submitted on or to hear date to the county commission. All having such accessible individuals with disabilities, sign and interpret the assistance of system are available. Part of the proceeding reached every public case and indicated that notice was here with posted in Baytown, Director Durr, for two seconds a week, March of the day. And with that.
Got one right here, Pat. Pat, right here. Pat, right behind you. Karen Salisbury.
Ben Zuccuni?
Nope, that's another one. Nope, Karen Salisbury is the one you want.
Okay, Karen Salisbury.
I don't need to say anything. I'm just letting you know I'm here.
Anybody else has any public comment?
Yes, I have a public comments.
No, no, this is separate. Just on the ordinance.
This is on the ordinance.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Hey, I don't think we have anyone, huh?
Leave it open for two weeks.
Yes, let's go ahead and leave it open for two more weeks, and then we can vote on it then.
All right. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right. All right.
Thank you.
So I think that's all we have, so we go to press and public comment, part two.
Now you're allowed. You're on.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ben Zuccuni, a founder of Plastic Free. I live in Graysonville. I'm excited to share with you the data that Plastic Free QSE has collected in response to your request in regards to how Centerville has dealt with the ordinance to eliminate single-use plastic carryout bags, as implemented in January of this year. We've done no less than five surveys, all of which I will leave with you, and I also will leave a copy of the Centerville ordinance, which can be used as a model. Just to give you a couple of highlights, we found that 23 out of 29 businesses surveyed here in Centerville by trained volunteers supported the idea of expanding the ordinance to all of Greenhills County. They were asked three questions. One, how was your experience with the plastic ban on a scale of one to five? Two, how did you adjust to the change on, again, on a scale of one to five? And finally, do you support a countywide ban, bag ban? Furthermore, we have collected 121 coalition members in support of a countywide ban on carryout plastic bags, including businesses, farms, restaurants, schools, and organizations. We also surveyed 93 businesses around the county and found that 72 stores already use paper bags only. Twelve use a mixture of paper and plastic, and four plan to switch from plastic to paper when their plastic stock is used up. So that makes 88 out of 93. Nobody likes change. Centerville went through some irritations and complaints from consumers to begin with, but now they've gotten used to it, and most people want the rest of the county to follow suit. Plastic Free was founded six years ago, and we started by picking up litter on the street just like Kent Island Beach Clean Up are doing on the beaches. But we quickly realized that that wasn't going to solve any of the problems because it reappeared a couple of weeks later. So that's when we realized we needed to go upstream and make an effort to get rid of the source. So I only have thirty seconds left, I can see. Anyway, uh, the problem is that it, it never goes away. It breaks down and it enters our bodies through microplastics, which is bad for us. So we all may have to do a little bit of sacrifice in order to, of convenience, in order to savor the environment for our children and grandchildren. So on that note, I want to thank you very, very much for supporting the effort to recycle boat shrink wrap. You've been great. And so we would like to contact you after you've had a chance to review this big stack.
Thank you very much.
Can you send that electronically?
Um, sure.
It, it actually has been sent electronically to a couple of our commissioners. So, uh, when she gets back from New Orleans.
We just have that scanned and then we'll send.
Yeah, we can scan it.
You just scan it and send it everywhere.
Yeah.
We all get together.
Good job. Thank you. Um, that's all the signed up. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Bruce, we got some folks? We were gonna say.
Some stand up maybe?
This horse walks into a bar.
Okay.
Wide, long face.
Wide, long face. So we'll close press and public comment. Round table.
Um.
Square table.
I, I, I don't know about three o'clock meetings. Everybody seems to get a little goofy around six o'clock.
Six ten.
No, that, I thought it was, I thought the information that we received, um, from the state was consistent with what we were told at Mako, um, smaller government, taller grass, deeper potholes. So, um, uh, and then, and again, our delegation here and the pep talk that we received from them to dig in, I, I couldn't agree, uh, more. Um, and I think that that, uh, is an advantage for Greenlands County because we do have Jack Wilton, who will be in November sworn in as the Mako president.
December.
Or just Sunday.
Close enough, yeah.
So that's all I have. Because I was running the meeting, I could go first. Jack?
Executive privilege?
Yes, executive privilege. Executed. Executive privilege.
Yeah, I, um, just on that note, the Mako note and all, um, one of the things Mako does do, and, and I know it, sometimes it feels like that we're succumbing to pressures and things like that, but we do what Annapolis can't do, and that's actually work through solutions that are, uh, you know, good for everybody. So we don't dig in our heels and say, no, no, no. But, uh, and what else did I have? Oh, yes. No, the, uh, what's that?
Sometimes we do. I mean, it, it is.
Oh, no, 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 no. Don't get me wrong. The, what, uh, what delegate Grace brought up about the, the rural coalition sticking together, we have killed, uh, in bills via Mako because of the rural counties banning together on certain things. Um, but there's, you know, if you, if you say no all the time, then you get the federal government, right? Or, or in this case, the state government and a lot of things. So you gotta compromise. If we started compromising at all levels of government, we'd have a much better world right now. But I digress from that. That's too political. Um, but I did want to say, uh, I found out, um, and I apologize that the information did not get up on our website for the Board of Ed, um, but I am promised that no later than, I'm gonna give you time, Wednesday of next week, but hopefully by tomorrow or the latest by Friday or whatever. All that information, we went over here, plus a few more little tidbits that we've been asked to supply. So, um, and if anybody's got any questions, like we said tonight, we're all here, we're all approachable and reachable, and so are the Board of Ed members. So please feel free to ask before you, uh, share your opinion, um, that's not fact-based. Thank you.
Chris?
And as the, we heard from the delegation, we encourage people to go down to general assembly and speak, but, um, what they're predicting is the can will get kicked down the road for a couple of years to avoid the election cycle before someone is going to fix the broken school funding problem. And so.
You heard that too?
We will, that's exactly what's gonna happen. So we will continue, the, these budget issues will continue to be issues. Um, and just, just to, cause it bears repeating, from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, we increased our local share per pupil, increased by seven hundred and eighteen dollars per pupil, the state by seventy-two dollars. So.
Yeah. So.
We did a little bit more than.
A little bit of disparity there.
Little bit more than what the state did. And so just imagine if the state had done half of what we had done, you would not have had any of the budget issues that we had this year. And there would be something to, you know, put in the savings account.
And, and I think to Jack's point, just to reiterate, and, and, you know, maybe what our teachers' union needs to do, maybe what our teachers need to do is, is turn to Annapolis and say, how come you guys aren't funding your fair share?
Agreed.
You gotta go to the deeper pocketses and.
Yeah.
There are deeper pockets in Annapolis than here.
To me, it, it really comes down to a matter of all, all levels of budgeting are in, in the government, right? It's, you gotta prioritize, right? So, so we, we put a high priority on public safety because that's one of our primary jobs is public safety. We have education as fifty percent of our budget, right? So some of our priorities are already set by mandate. Okay? Annapolis can do the same thing. You know, they, they have a big pool of money in the billions to play with, and they could prioritize education over all else if they wanted to, right? They, they could make that choice. That's, you know, but, you know, and you can keep saying, oh, the, the pool of money's smaller. I get it. We, we, we heard the State Highway Administration sitting here tonight and say that their, their pool of money is basically nonexistent. What, what'd he say? Sixty million dollars for District Two?
Ten billion instead of sixty.
And we only got ten. So what are our roads gonna look like in three years from now? Two years from now, without doing those systemic, uh, uh, pavings, right? They're, you're gonna have potholes that VWs will fall into and lose, you know? So you gotta prioritize your spending. It's what we have to do here. It's what you have to do at all levels.
And, and we are a rural county. I, I think a lot of people move here from counties that are more densely populated. And they move to Ken Island where obviously there is a concentration of our population, and they forget that we are a rural county. Fit, like fifty thousand people in the entire county. Don't tell me what Antioch County does. Like Senator Hirsch said, three billion dollars for their education.
Good budget, yeah.
Right? Like, that so dwarfs our county budget by thousands of percent. Like, so it's not a comparison.
Right.
Right? And, and if that's what you want, you need to move back to Antioch County. I know your house will cost twice as much. Your taxes will go up, but, you know, that's, when you move here and you move to a rural county, there are trade-offs. You, you can't expect what you had in the counties that had a whole lot more money, a whole lot more money that they can, that they can put to these things. We have just less people to pull from. Um, and so it, it makes it difficult and we have to try to balance everything.
Well, and they, and they have more dense areas, you know, it's, it's.
We have a lot of land and a lot of people.
Correct. And, and that's, that's a driving force. If you could.
And a lot of.
Four hundred taxpayers in, in, in the same acre where we only have three taxpayers living?
Todd, what is the total mileage of county roads that we have to maintain?
We're five hundred.
Five hundred and sixty-five.
Five hundred and sixty-five.
Thirty-three bridges.
That's ours, Todd.
That's just our, that's just our roads.
That's just our roads.
That's not the state, right?
It's not the state.
That's what's crazy when you think about it.
Yeah. So it's, it's a lot to balance. And I think we do a pretty good job, not to.
I think Shane Moore is.
Pretty good job, but there's.
And his team, yeah, they do.
But they prioritize it. And we, and we started ten years ago with the systemic, you know, every five years we're doing this, every seven years we're doing this. And, and is it tough? Yeah. Because again, and it was already brought up earlier, we lost the highway user revenues.
Right.
And, and that was a grab because let's go with a little history here. Why did we have that, uh, referendum on the ballot, what, two election cycles ago, I guess, to put the lockbox on the transportation fund?
Yeah.
Cause it was nothing in it, cause they had raided it, which was the reason we didn't have HGRs to start with, you know? So.
I can remember my first term, we were getting six and a half, seven million dollars a year in highway user money.
What are we now, Todd? Around eight hundred thousand?
Uh, a little more, maybe a million, million two, something like that.
What was our budget then versus?
Right, right, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That was a huge, huge amount of our budget.
Huge shit, yeah.
It was painful.
Oh, that's ten percent, right? Probably close to it.
At that time?
Yeah.
Anything else for you?
No.
Patrick?
Good.
To your.
Been sitting there so patiently.
Yes. Well, I, I'm in the presence of great minds.
I hope they show up.
I hope they show up.
It's all lecery.
Patrick, I'm talking about Stefan.
He's not, the great mind's not here.
That's what I meant.
He's on a mission.
So to reiterate everything you just said, I think it's time that we put on our website the P, you asked the question and couldn't get the answer. Who do our citizens and our teachers and our teachers' union contact? And I'm assuming it's the Secretary of Education, but there's people below them that need to hear of our struggles. So.
Can the teachers' union knows who to contact?
But the public doesn't.
They negotiate.
But the public doesn't. So I'm just suggesting, can we put that on our website on, or as we send out emails to people, you know, that are calling us and blaming us for all of the education issues, you know, you need to reach out to the state. We're with you. You know, let's reach out to the state and to your point, let's pick a day in January, Legislative Day, and try to get our teachers and our, our, our parents to go into Annapolis. Uh, the second thing, I was very pleased with Will's on answer on how we might be able to get a little bit more control of our roads next year, and that is go to the, uh, Secretary of Transportation on the federal level. So I, I talked to him afterwards and he said, look, if you get the letter, we're gonna, we're gonna work with you. So I'd like to, uh, see if we can, uh, uh, address, um, Secretary Buttigieg asking for us spell out what we're asking to do, whatever that is, so we can have control for the month of July of twenty twenty-five for Route Eight and Route Eighteen to allow our people, our, our, you know, our nurses and our doctors and our people that work in the cath lab and, uh, to go to Annapolis, that they have a sticker or whatever it is and they can get on Duke Street. Anyhow.
Sure.
I was very encouraged that he did not shut us down.
Should we have our, should we have our federal delegation at least kind of grease the wheels before we send this letter of support or something?
Our federal delegation is waiting to hear from us.
Well, we'll, we'll create a letter of support for sure. Absolutely.
Our, our, our congressman will support us on this. I can't say.
Make a motion to draft a letter of support for.
Send it to who?
I'm making a motion that we send.
To do what you just said.
That's right.
Second.
Thank you.
You got that, Steph?
So, so we have, so we have, uh, we have a motion and we have a second.
For a letter of support.
For a letter of support, um.
For a pilot program for next summer, for, let's just say the summer.
The freedom to leave, uh, the State Department of Transportation alone while we do a pilot program and, and test our theories.
And that the state of Maryland will not be penalized.
Right.
For federal transportation funds. That, let's face it.
That's the body of.
That's, that's it. That, that, that's the concern.
So good luck.